Okay, you're good to go. All right, welcome to the special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Wednesday, May 3rd at 2:00 PM. Can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Here.
Reedon?
Here.
Leganski?
Yes.
Lenny?
Present.
Swett?
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. All right, and we'll open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If anyone has a public comment, please make way to the podium. Okay, see, now, well, let's get right into our new business. Our first interview is with Mr. Robert Durm. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure to be here.
We appreciate your time and energy getting to know our community and being with us today. Please take the next two or three minutes and tell us about yourself both personally and professionally.
All right. Well, I'm disappointed that all the people I called to come and make comments during public comment, my sister who's sitting in the audience didn't stand up and say anything on my behalf. I grew up in Niles, in the Niles Buchanan area, went to Niles High School, played a year of Division III football, played the last game on Buchanan's field, Niles Buchanan, back in 1981. Then we took the hiatus for years. Ended up transferring to Holy Cross, ended up at Notre Dame, graduated in 87. Real diverse background. I worked in sales for a while, had gone back into education on occasion. I've spent some time in some of your classrooms here. I've been in the classroom at Ottawa Elementary in Moccasin. I've been at the junior high as well. I don't think I ever subbed at the high school. But I ended up at Schrader Steel Fabricating in Niles for about 23 years, was their project manager. And that was about the time I got involved with Nile City Council. And I was 30 years old, started on council and stayed on there for 24 years, served as mayor pro temp for eight years. You know, a government major in college and it was always an interest of mine. And that's where I try my, I find my true passion is in that. Ran for mayor in 2016 and was thrashed by the current mayor. You know, it was, it was twofold. There was marijuana recreationally was on the ballot. My candidate, my opposition was 30 years old. I was a 50-year-old candidate. I was deemed conservative. He was deemed liberal. And when I got to the polling place, I knew I was in trouble because I saw people there voting that I'd never seen before in my life in the town of Niles. But, so I lost 75% of the vote and I went into seclusion for about a year because it stung really bad. But I've always supported the city and my next election, I was still deemed the conservative one and not in favor of marijuana. And there were candidates that were younger and more liberal-minded that were on the ballot and I tied in my election. I had to go to St. Joe and draw from a hat. And I picked the wrong, I picked not elected. So that ended my career in Niles in 2018. But I left Schrader Steel Fabricating, ended up going to Forwin's Casino, working in transportation there as a shift supervisor. Saw a great opportunity in Cass, worked in Cass County for a year as the director of their public transit. And moved from there to where I am now, South Bend Community School Corporation as assistant director. A little bit of a shock going from, you know, 12 buses and 15 employees to about 200 buses and about 150 employees. But I certainly was, I've learned a lot in the time that I've been in South Bend, so. Always had a keen interest in Buchanan. I used to come over to the feed mill when it was on, when it was downtown and I was much younger. I really liked it. And we'd come down to the Buchanan Farmers Credit Union when it was on Front Street and we'd deposit our fair premium checks. And I remember always looking into McCoy Creek and I thought how cool that was. And I always loved to go down there and look in the creek. But then when they moved the feed mill out there on Red Bud and I had to come get feed myself and load a ton and a half of feed in the pickup truck, it wasn't so much fun. But that's, that's me in a nutshell, I suppose.
Not every decision you make turns out as planned. Sometimes there is disappointment along the way. Please share a time when a project you were involved in did not yield the results you had hoped for. And what did you learn from the process?
That's an interesting one. I suppose probably being on the county, being the director of public transportation for Cass County. Most people don't know that they're one of two agencies in the state of Michigan that have no local funding. They're funded solely by state and federal monies. I took the job and it was, we were on a COVID plan which state and federal government were giving back 70% of our eligible expenses, which was keeping the doors open. And part of the reason why they hired me was to get a millage passed. And I brought the millage proposal to them in 2021 in February, knowing that I had to have it. I wanted to be on the primary ballot because millage proposals don't do well in the general election. People don't like to raise taxes and generally the turnout's lighter for the primaries, so it's easier to get those things through. And they said, oh, we have some questions on it and we don't know. So I brought it back to them a month later, knowing I had to get it to them in May. Still saw a little opposition. Thought I had it. I thought I'd get it by them in April and they still said, we're not ready to go out for millage. They felt that. We were telling people, no, three or four times a month for rides. And they thought that was too much. And so they wouldn't approve the millage campaign, the millage proposal. So then I knew I wasn't going to be in the fall, in the primary ballot. Wasn't going to be on the fall ballot. We're going to have to get to spring. And finances were really, really tight. So that was a huge, huge disappointment. I don't think it was any failure of mine. I think it was a couple of the board members, the authority that governed us were a little narrow sighted on what we did as a, as an agency, the good that we did.
Since the time that he contacted you to let you know that you were a finalist, what are some things that you have done in preparation to interview today?
Well, I'd get anyone who want to take a ride with me to jump in the car, to look at some of the areas of town that I probably didn't know as well. Tried to drive the full perimeter just to see the entryway to each, each entryway into the city to see what they looked like. Because I know that that's something that you want to focus on is making sure that wherever people are coming from, you have a good impression when they drive into the city. You've got a lot of really good information to look at. I've read through a lot. And actually, I was like a kid in a candy shop. That's the kind of stuff, looking at the vision for Buchanan. That stuff's really neat. I love seeing that stuff. And so, yeah, I read through the meeting minutes from the last year. Read a lot of really nice things, some interesting things. I see that you guys don't always agree to agree, but that's okay because I don't think that a council or a commission that's agreeable all the time is necessarily a good thing. I think it's good to have some disagreement and good conversation. Some of the conversation might get a little more heated than others at times, but I think that's, good civil discourse is great for, for an organization like this. So, but yeah, I did a lot of reading, looked at the last three audits, looked at your current revised budget, read through the vision. I actually did the monkey survey on the river. So I put my two cents in on that. So, yeah, tried to get, catch myself up to date as much as I can on all the things that are going on, including your projects, construction projects, your public works, building. I see you're done now with your, with your wastewater treatment plant. But I just, just trying to get myself as educated as I can. So if by chance you were to hire me, I'd be ready to go when I walked through the door.
That's great. No, I appreciate that because I think the time and effort that you put into not only to prepare for the interview, but I'm sure there was some personal desire to go out and learn that and get that information as well. And it sounds like you were pretty surprised at the amount of information that's out there. And it is available.
Yeah, I mean, that's the internet age. I mean, you can get ahold of anything online.
Right. And I think my point to that was that a lot of people don't take the time and effort to do that. So I commend you for that because we hear repeatedly that there's not information out there and it's hard to find. Like, I don't think it's that difficult. I think you just have to know what to look for.
I did read in your, in your, in your master plan that majority of the people get their information online. And that's the surprising thing, just more people need to get there to look for it.
Correct. Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Durm. Buchanan City Commission is looking for a leader who will serve our community with, with great leadership. Please share a time in the past three years that you went above and beyond to provide excellent leadership in your current position.
I would say probably my current position now, stepping in as assistant director. The director placed a lot, a lot of things in my care. One of the things was this card, we have a student ID card project that the previous assistant director had been managing. And it had kind of stalled out. And immediately I saw the importance of something like that. I really think that in talking with the people from CI Solutions, a company that was presenting the information, other, other school districts were, were all in and using it. And it was really a valuable resource to them. So, you know, I took it by myself to kind of step up and start pushing that project through. And we developed the card. It went from just simply a card where students would scan to get on a bus to a card that could be used by the, the food, food service for student lunch program. So the people in the, in the lunchroom didn't have to, you know, make change for everybody to pay in cash. They could use their card and, and student accounts, keeping track of those accounts. They could use it for their library card in the school. The same thing, saving students time and saving staff time having to, to work and checking books out, handwriting things. And and it worked as well for transportation and it made us more efficient. It allowed us to do audits of buses to see what students were really riding. Because the ones that are scanning on and off the bus are the ones that on. And drivers sometimes tend to not tell us when there's kids not riding the bus because it just makes their job a lot easier where they're not hauling all those kids. But I think that it, getting that card done, we just finished up our pilot. They're continuing to use the card. We did it with the K through five classes, schools. We did it with one middle school. We did it with Adams High School, which is the largest school. We wanted to make sure it was working for everybody. And I'm getting now, I had to send out a survey, create a survey and send it out. I'm getting good feedback on it. So I think it's going to be a tool that's going to really help the school system. I think it's going to help, you know, the taxpayers, it's going to maximize the money that they contribute. And I think that it was my leadership that saw that project through.
Thank you.
Would you please describe your management style?
Sure. I like to lead by example first. You know, I always want to be the hardest working guy in the room. I would never ask anybody to do something that I wouldn't do myself first. And at the same time, I think once you build a rapport with your staff and they know that you're, you're willing to put in the effort, they're going to be more likely to put in the effort for you when you ask them to do something. So, you know, I, I don't like to micromanage, but I certainly want to know what everybody's doing. And obviously, if I think that something could be done better, I would offer that suggestion. But, you know, I think that, you know, a true leader is one that everyone can look to, can count on and someone that they respect, so.
In your opinion, what are the two most important issues that you plan to tackle as our city manager?
Well, public health and safety is always paramount. You know, as elected officials, you know that. And anybody who's worked in, in the field know that. I think that's pretty well taken care of. I think that being fiscally sound, being really conservative, especially in light of the economy the way it is today. And looking at the, the audits, I noticed a trend where your, your general fund seems to be, you're losing a little money every year. Like what, in 2020, you actually, I think, put money away. And the last two years, I noticed that the general fund's been, been dropping a little bit. You're still really sound financially. I mean, I think what, 30% of your, of your, your general fund is 30% of your operating budget, which, you know, nowadays, it used to be 25% was really sound. And then as things got tighter, they started saying, well, 15%, you're healthy. But you guys are doing really well. But, I mean, it's a trend I think that we want to keep an eye on. You don't want to, you don't want to continue to see that. Although there's, you know, decrease in property tax revenue, there's other, there's some things that are causing that. Some of the projects that you're, you're carrying out, making improvements. But that's the one thing I think I really want to look at first and foremost. And then the second would be, you know, following through on this stuff. You know, you've got two tools right here. You've got the, the vision and you've got your master plan. You know, a lot of people put a lot of time into the master plan. And that's just an unbelievable resource. It's surveys. It tells you what, the people are telling you what they want in that. But what happens is, and it happened in Niles, you get through that and it gets put in a binder and it gets put on a shelf. And nobody ever follows through with that stuff. Same thing with the vision for Buchanan. Now, you've got some people here in reading through the minutes, Rich and Ms. Regal. I mean, they're, they're worth their weight and gold, literally. And I think they're the type of people that are going to help do that. But, you know, taking the things that, that you have planned and just following through on them, setting, set prioritizing them. There's things like trees in the common. Not going to cost you a whole lot. You know, when you look in the vision for Buchanan, they show the picture without, and then a picture with trees. You know, that's something that can be done really easy. So prioritize those things. Start accomplishing the things that you know you can get done fairly reasonably. And once you start getting things done and you see the result of that, it starts to snowball. And it, it's taken that first step. So I think that would be the second thing would be just, you know, taking the resources we have and the information and just starting to follow through on that stuff. Because there's a lot of really good things there that can really make the city better than it is now.
Providing excellent customer service is critical in Buchanan. We take great pride in responding to our customers. Please share a time when you were asked, or sorry, when you were able to solve a challenging citizen, consumer, or customer concern using excellent personal skills.
Well, in South Bend Community, South Bend Community School Corporation, that'd be every day. So I, I like to think I'm fairly personable and I like to communicate with people. And in communicating, I think the biggest thing is listening. And our call center representatives learned right away that I rarely say no. And that I do a fairly good job of kind of talking people down. So the first two or three months, I was getting 15 to 20 calls a day of parents that were irate. You missed my kid. You didn't pick my kid up. The bus isn't coming. And, you know, I, I have a knack for, the first thing, most people in a situation like that, they just want to be heard. They don't want someone coming back, meeting them with resistance. So I just listen. And once they're done, you know what? I apologize to them. Sorry for the inconvenience. I, I understand the position. And I said, let's, let's figure out a way we can do better. Let me, let me try and work on solving your problem. And most of the time, by the time the people get off the phone, they're thanking me. So, you know, I suppose I can't name one instance in particular, but I think there's just a lot of small ones that I can refer to that that would serve as good examples, I guess.
Thank you for that. And I think that one important aspect of that is that when I was listening to you talk about that topic and touching on his question is, something I talk about a lot is that you have to listen, understand, and care. And if you do them in those order, in that order, and you, I mean, you're right at the end and they're thanking you, which that's the care part, right? They obviously, you showed some kind of appreciation for them and the difficult situation they're going through. And what a lot of people don't realize is that...
I want to call a point where, Mark, we were really instructed to stick to this. So stick to this, please.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Point taken. Thanks. So, looking at your resume, you obviously have had some several accomplishments at different places. What are two of the key things out of all of those resume bullet points you gave us that you believe stand out? Is true accomplishments that you believe you would hang your hat on?
Yeah, I think my year in, in Cass was a challenging year. And there's a lot probably on the resume, there's probably that's not on the resume. One of the things was, you know, they were formed by health service agencies, you know, back in the seventies. And like I said, one of two agencies in the state of Michigan that had no local funding. So their funding all came from contracts with health service agencies. Well, guess who the board is for Cass County Transportation? It's all the directors of all the health agencies. And where the big conflict of interest comes in is that it's the, it's the director of the facility. It's not an elected person. So they have, they have a vested interest in what rates they're paying to all their people around. You know, it's Cass County, it's the medical care facility, it's the council on aging. And they were making all their, they were making really good money up until COVID off those contracts, didn't have to rely on the local funding. Once COVID hit, they lost all those contracts. And that's why the 70% reimbursement from the state and federal government became crucial for them. But one thing I did do was I looked at the rates we were charging. I calculated what our operation, our hourly rate of operation was. And we were actually losing money on our contracts. So I had to get, I had to raise the rate on the contracts for those who were paying us the money through the contracts. And, and I was able to raise our rate from $30 an hour in county to $50 an hour in county. And it was 35 out of county, 55 out of county. So that, and I think probably my, the thing I take most pride in is, in Cass County, they have a veteran affairs office. And I found out they had like $30,000 of funding that they could use for transportation that was not being used. And so I approached Karim Kraus, the veteran affairs director. And we came up with, I came up with a contract where they would, we would transport veterans. It was one day a week, but free of charge to any VA hospital in the lower half of Michigan and northern Indiana. So we were taking veterans to Battle Creek, to Detroit, Mishawaka, Ben Harbor. And it was all free of charge. And, and I actually got to drive a couple of veterans to Battle Creek myself. And we were short drivers. And nothing more rewarding than that, because that's a service that, and a lot of, a lot of the veterans didn't know. And the other thing was, we, we were, worked closely with veteran affairs. We had some veterans that were kind of lost. And our drivers were picking them up and finding out that they had no resources at all. They were sickly, you know, they didn't have money for groceries. We were taking them to the grocery store. So Jeremiah Jones, who's on the county commission, was a veteran, who is a liaison to the veteran affairs committee. I worked closely with him. Anytime we saw a veteran like that, I would call Jeremiah and he'd do a wellness check. And we started making arrangements where we're picking those veterans up, take them to the store so they could get their groceries and things. And we made sure that veteran services were able to help them get the money for those groceries and things. So that was probably the most rewarding thing. And I, I would hang my hat on that all day long. And that's...
Thank you.
What are the three greatest traits you would employ to build and foster an engaging relationship with the staff, the residents, city commission, and the business community?
I think that was one of the questions we had on our, on our application. Of course, integrity, I think, is number one. And I like to use integrity because integrity in the definition is honesty. And I like to think that I always hold myself at a high standard. Interpersonality is another one. I don't even know if that's a word. But interpersonal relationships, I think, are really important. And it goes back to us talking about communication and listening. You know, a large part of that is listening. You know, I got a degree from Notre Dame and it really qualified me to do nothing. But the one thing it did teach me is, is to, to, I can learn and I can listen and communicate. So I can listen to someone and I can understand both sides of an argument. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know everything. And, and your opinion is just as valid as my opinion. And I, I go out of the way to try and understand what your opinion is before I would pass judgment. I like to think of myself too as, as a good, I was a person on council that could get people to compromise and, and I would like mediate and get them to come to, to some agreement. And that's just because of that reason. I can understand both sides of an argument. And, and I can make concessions. And then the third thing is, is just dedication. You know, you want to hire someone you know that's dedicated to the position. You don't want to hire someone that thinks is going to be gone in a year. You want someone that's going to integrate themselves in the community. And I know a lot of city managers, Rick Huff at Niles is one that, he, he's not very, he's not in the public eye much. You know, he's not very visible. In a small town like Buchanan, you know, there's nothing wrong with being visible and getting out of the community. You know, I'd attend every event. You know, my wife and I loved, she works at the Niles Buchanan YMCA. And she greets everybody at the front desk. And we like being out and like being visible and like meeting people in the community. So those would be the three things, the three things that I'd put on my, my application are the things I think that are important to, to becoming a good leader for the staff.
Thank you.
What is the most useful criticism you've ever received? And what did you learn from it?
I don't know if anyone's ever criticized me. I think probably being procrastinating, I would think would probably be, and, and I may have heard that from more than one person. When I was younger, I tended to, to procrastinate. And I always told myself that I just worked better under pressure. But really, I realized I was, I just procrastinated. So I made it a point to try and, and turn my weakness into a strength. So I can tell you that in going through the, the training for fundamentals of transit management through MDOT in, up in, at Central Michigan, a lady from Easter Seals, Carol Kendrenine, said that you're 70% more likely to complete something if you write it down. So I had made an effort then to every day create a to-do list. And I would prioritize that to-do list and work off that to-do list. And that solved my problem with procrastinating. Because I tackled the number one thing on my list every day to get through it. And the next morning, I would come in and I'd start, I'd start with that list. And I make a new list for the day to make sure that I'm not forgetting anything and that the important things I'm working on are getting done. And that I'm not putting anything off.
What tools or techniques do you use to ensure the city commission has always kept apprised of major issues that arise within the city?
You guys text? You know, that was a tool that wasn't always available when I was on council at Niles. And you know, I, I tell you, we, we didn't do a very good job of communicating in Niles. The, the agenda packet would come out on a Thursday. If you could get there early, great. Otherwise, you were picking it up maybe Friday night when you were done with work. And you had the packet for the weekend for a Monday meeting. And I mean, you've seen agenda packets. There, there's a lot of reading to do, a lot to get through. And when there was an emergency, yeah, we'd get a call. But story, the, Mr. Ron Gilenick, state rep, he was approached by the NAACP to rename, they wanted the state to rename our main street bridge, the Martin Luther King Jr. Bridge. And he didn't, he knew a lot of people in his district, probably wouldn't be in favor of that. So he passed it on to the Nile City Council. He approached the city manager and said, hey, why don't you guys make, make a recommendation on this for us before we present it to the state? So I get my packet on a Friday and here's this on the agenda. And I start looking at it. I'm thinking, why? You know, we named 17th Street between Eagle and Merrifield, between the high school and junior high Martin Luther King Way. We really already honored him. There's a lot of other things. We could name it Veteran Memorial Bridge. We have our Veterans Memorial Park there. So you didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare because we didn't get much notification. We get to the meeting on Monday and we had discussion on it. And we had to call vote. And lo and behold, I had to vote first that time because it was the third thing and the fourth thing on the agenda. And I was the fourth seat. So they, they called the vote and I voted no, thinking that there was other things we'd named it for. Not because I'm a racist, not because it was Martin Luther King. And then the vote went, yes, 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 yes. I was called a racist in the newspaper. They called me to task. But had I had a little more time to prepare, I knew, I knew what the people in my ward would want. But if I had more time, I could have called more people and gotten more input. As it turned out... As it turned out, the, the Daily Star, Deb, I don't know if you were on, on Daily Star staff at that time, did a public opinion poll that week, 99 to one against naming it Martin Luther King Junior Bridge. But not for reasons you would think. I mean, the Finley family donated the property that City Hall's on. African-American family in the community, I thought the Finley Bridge, you know, Muhammad Ali. There's a lot of people we could name the bridge after. But yeah, I think that using, using, you know, your phones and texting. And anytime something comes up, getting that information out to you as fast as we can, keeping you up to date. I felt when I was on council that I, I suppose, and that's a dangerous thing. Because you guys are voting on really important things. You know, it's in your hands. We can, we can make recommendations and we can give you information. But you're the ones having to make those decisions. And if, you don't want to make an uninformed decision. So the more, the longer you have information and the more you can look into it to make your decision is important. So I mean, I would use any, anything possible. I'd give you a phone call, stop at your house if I have to to let you know, so.
Our new city manager will need to be a regional voice and foster excellent relationships with our neighboring communities. Please share with us how you will build lasting positive relationships with adjacent community leaders.
Well, I think I might have a head start on my, my, my opposition or my other contenders here. That's one thing, being involved in, in local politics for so long, you get to know a lot of people. And if you looked at my references, I, I hope you called them all. I hope they gave me all good references, especially in Niles Township Supervisor. If I got a bad reference from her, I'd be a little disappointed. But no, my aunt is the super, the Township Supervisor, Terry Yule, who's the clerk, was our city manager in Niles. I was one who hired Terry and worked with him for years. Juan Genum, our city planner, is now the city manager in Bridgman. Sonia Vitale, who was our city planner, is now the supervisor, city manager in South Haven, I think. So, you know, I know a lot of people and, and you know, I don't know everything. But I tell you what, I know where I can get answers for stuff, you know. If we need contractors for a project, I can call five or six people and get a list of names of good contractors that we might want to send an RFP out to. So, and, and I, I look forward to being involved in, in organizations, you know, the, the city manager, state city manager, I want to get involved. I want to go to meetings, I want to, I want to reach out even further. But, and it's not just, it's just not city managers, it's people in transportation. It's, you know, the MDOT, our MDOT project manager, people at the highest levels in, in the state of Michigan in transportation. I was in meetings with Pepper Martin, Zoom meetings with our project manager. And Dennis Hsu, who's now in, in Barien. So yeah, I, I have a, a lengthy network and I would certainly lean heavily on them. And I would love to expand that network even more.
Thank you. As you had stated, you had looked through our previous budgets. And you had mentioned about the general fund that had dropped in the last two years. Is there anything during your reviews that had stood out besides the general fund that, in your experience?
Well, you know, looking through the budget isn't as fun as looking through a vision for Buchanan. I, you know, just, it, it seemed like things, they've been doing a pretty good job, I think. I think it's just a matter of maybe just looking to be a little more conservative in spending. You know, but without being here and seeing what the needs are, it's really difficult to tell. You know, yeah, and, and looking through the three audits, a lot of you didn't look through the budget. I did get a clean, updated copy from the clerk. She was nice enough to send it to me. But, you know, no, other than the fact that noticing that, that, you know, property tax revenue had dropped a little bit. That there's some projects that you're, you're making contributions to annually that, you know, are probably going to continue to, to be in place for some time. And so other than that, you know, it looks pretty standard, your, your finances.
Thank you.
Many of the projects that we hope to achieve over the next five years involve grant writing and economic development. Please detail your current and/or previous experiences in grant writing and successful economic development projects.
Well, grant writing, that, I don't, not much experience. That's why, you know, Rich Murphy and, and Miss Regal are, are probably the, you know, the ones that I would probably have to lean on a lot for that. I do want to continue my education. I, I would, I'd be willing to take some, some classes. I, I wanted to go to take some classes on grant writing. Because I think that in Cass, I tried to, I looked at it this way. If I could either save money or make enough money to cover the cost, the expense of my wages, then I felt that I was, I was, I was worth hiring. So between the two, I think coming into a position like this is that's, that's what I'll focus on. You know, it's not always about grant writing. Sometimes it's, it's maybe saving some money. But unfortunately, I don't have a lot of experience in that area. But I'm willing to learn. I think Mayor, you're the one, about a year ago, you made a comment about you can, if you hire good working people, you can teach them how to do the job. But, you know, I, I don't, I don't have much grant writing experience. Now, e- e- economic development, I mean, you know, through my involvement with the city, you know, we, we've done plenty of that, but you know, through staff, as much involvement as you would have, I suppose, in that.
All righty then. Fast forward to May 2024. It's time for us, the City Commission, to evaluate your first year as our city manager. Please share with us what you hope to have accomplished in the first year in office.
Well, first of all, I would think probably the first three months I'd have to spend just getting to know every employee. You know, speaking to each one individually, getting to know their names, getting to know what they're doing, getting to know what their strengths are, their weaknesses are. And then the next three months, you know, through all the organizations and all the meetings, the Main Street Group, Vision for Buchanan, McCoy Creek Trail Group, attending as many meetings as I can and getting to know the people involved in that area. Once you get through about six months, then it's just getting, you know, putting the nose to the grindstone and starting to get working on projects, you know, starting to follow through maybe on some things in the Buchanan vision. Using information from your master plan. Of course, you know, leading you in the right direction as, as a commission, but also at the same time, getting as much information and feedback from you as I can. You know, ultimately you guys are the ones in charge and, and, you know, I can make recommendations, but ultimately you're the ones making the decisions. So I would certainly want some input from you as well. But I would like to think that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make Buchanan a much better place than it is within a year.
Thank you.
When you consider all the components of municipal, excuse me. When you consider all the components of municipal management, what one area do you believe you truly excel in?
Probably consensus building. I mean, getting, getting people to come together, building a consensus, you know. And that helps in getting things accomplished. I mean, if, if there's constant pushback, bringing people together, getting them to focus on a common goal, getting it, getting them to agree on a common goal first and then working towards that is, is probably key. You know, it, we would have, you know, in the city of Niles, we got a, we have an eight-member board. So you have four and four. So, you know, you can end up in a tie sometimes. So it was important to try and get people to, to, to come together to an agreement. And, you know, for the most part, we were, we had a lot of 7-1, 8-0 votes, which, you know, I would like to think that some of that came from maybe some of my discussion and getting people to, to see both sides and come to agreement. Could you repeat the question again? I think I got off track a little bit.
When you consider all the components of municipal management, one, one area do you believe you truly excel in?
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, that would be it. It would be getting people to come together and come to a consensus, come to an agreement.
Thank you.
What are the most critical things you will do as a first-time city manager to enhance your ability to be successful?
Could you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, yeah, no. What are the most critical things you will do as a first-time city manager to enhance your ability to be successful?
I think probably the most important, especially in the first year, is getting to know staff, learning strengths and weaknesses, and, and relying on them, learning from them as we go along. I think that, you know, anyone who's a first-time city manager, it's, it's, it's a lot different sitting there than it is sitting here. And, you know, any of you who'd sit in the same spot might have the same struggles. At the same time, you know, you got to start somewhere. But I think that having sat where you sat helps me understand what this position and what they're going to experience a little more. And, and it helps in the communication with, with the board. I think someone who's never had that experience might come in a little bewildered sometimes, you know, when you're sitting in a public meeting. You know, just knowing the way public meetings run, you know, been through them 24 years, twice a month, sometimes more. You know, it just becomes routine and, and, and habit, I guess. But, you know, I mean, I, I, hey, I'll admit it. I'm going to, I'm going to have to rely on other people a lot. I'm going to ask a lot of questions and I'm going to learn as much as I can. But I am a quick study.
Great, thank you. So over the next several years, the city of Buchanan has several water and sewer infrastructure projects that are ahead of us. What is your basic understanding of utilities and what that entails? And as you stated, you know, maybe you may not be the smartest person in the room, but your experience in Niles probably does.
Well, you know, in Niles, we own and operate our own utilities. So, you know, probably more experienced than most in that area. You know, there's a big debate on whether they should continue to own and operate their utilities. They talked at one point about trying to sell them off because the cost of maintaining those facilities, those, the infrastructure is so, so high. We had a lot of older infrastructure that was going to need improvements. And I, I noticed to fund your wastewater treatment plant, you had to increase rates some. I know in Niles, it was difficult because owning and operating your own utilities, we had a Utilities Reserve Fund that had a lot of money in it because they made a lot of money from utilities. And you had some members of the council who wanted to use that money for projects in the city because it was the taxpayers' money. And then there were the old school guys that were, well, that's in the utilities fund. It needs to be used for utilities. So, yeah, I mean, you're, it, it's difficult. I mean, you have, you have to make those rate increases to help fund those things. You want to be careful because, you know, it's a lot easier to raise rates into lower rates. You're, you're not going to go backwards. So you have to be, you have to make sure fiscally that it's something that you, you know you really need to do. But yeah, so I understand you're, you're, you're still funding your wastewater treatment plant. I think that you'll probably, you're good for what, 50 years or more? I mean, I don't, the, the, I was reading the amount of people that that will service is, you know, 50,000 people or something. You got a population of 4,500, I think you're well set. And you're building the new, I, the one thing I did not see, which shame on me, was your project for Public Works. And, I mean, I, I looked at some maps, I looked some aerial views. I assume construction started on that, right? Is it?
The ground, yeah, there's started groundwork at the end of this one.
Okay, so, but, yeah, I mean, I could go back and repeat the question one more time.
Sure. Just over the next several years, we have several water and sewer infrastructures. What is your basic understanding of utilities and how would you plan to sharpen your skills? And I think in your.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, a lot of that comes down to public health and safety and those are things that you know you need to do. I mean, you know, sewer systems and things, they, and, and I know a lot of communities in the Midwest, you know, Niles, you know, I don't know how many miles of old clay, lime tiles we had, water lines we had, old, old rusty. We had kind of, one year we had, I don't know how many water main breaks in the middle of winter. It was water coming up everywhere. We had street department workers coming out to help the water department workers because we had so much work to do. But you know, that, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, you know it has to be done. It's just finding a way to get it done and find a way to do it responsibly, fiscally.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Durham, we're about ready to wrap things up. So please take two to three minutes and tell us why you are the right fit and the ideal candidate to lead Buchanan.
Okay. Number one, I'm familiar with the area. I'm familiar with Buchanan. Some of my fondest memories, like I said, are coming down to, to Front Street to, to see McCoy Creek. I, that familiarity. Number two, the network of people that I know that I can rely on, that I can lean on, get information from in the area. I have sat on the Southeast, Southeast Marion County Landfill Board for 10 years. I was vice chairman for five. So I have an intimate understanding, maybe more so than some of you on the, on the board of the operations out there. I've been through some things out there, off-site migration of pollution, coming to agreements with property owners, settlements because of that. Eminent domain and acquiring property to try and extend the life of that, I was part of that. So that and the, the Murph, you know, the material recycling facility that the city is operating out there. I would guess that, you know, other, other, the other candidates for this position probably aren't aware of those things. And I've sat in this council chamber, this commission chamber, voting on the Southwest Michigan Community Ambulance Service Assessment on, on several occasions. So, I mean, familiarity and experience, I think my, my civic duty that I committed to for so long, I think helps put me in a good position to, to come in and, and maybe have a little bit of a head start will help. That and the fact that, you know, you're not going to find a harder worker, you know, I'm going to be the hardest working guy in the room. You know, if it means staying late, I'll stay late. If it means coming in early, I'll come in early, whatever it takes to get the job done. And, and the passion for it. I mean, this is, you know, it's, it was in my DNA. Well, you know, I have a cousin who's a judge. My Uncle Pat, who's deceased, God rest his soul, was a county commissioner in St. Agnes. My Uncle Joe was a saint, was a city, city council member in St. Agnes and was also county commissioner, was the county commissioner for Mackinac Island. My Aunt Mary grew up in this area, but spent a lot of her life in Port Huron, Michigan, was a city council member in Port Huron, Michigan. My aunt is a superintendent. So, I mean, it's just something that, you know, come, come to one of our family get-togethers. I think we've kind of made it a point that we don't talk politics and, but it, it's something that I, I love to do. And like I said, I, I love looking through this information. I think there's a lot of really good stuff there. I think Buchanan, I, I've been jealous of Buchanan for years. I wish Niles had, had, had done some more of the things that you are. I think the one thing that, that I see in here that I think is really important is taking advantage of the river. I think that that's just an untapped resource. I didn't realize that until starting to look through this information that the city owned as much property on the river as they do. I did launch from the kayak, the boat launched down there. I did the Lions Club Poker Run year before last. And actually it was really successful. If anybody wants, after the meeting or the next few days, if you want it, well, actually I'm going out of town. But I'd take you to Gary Z's because I got a couple of gift certificates there I won through the poker run. But, yeah, I, I think that my overall, my familiarity, I don't know if you have a residency requirement or not, but I, I don't live that far away, but I'm getting ready to put my house on the market. And we are looking in the area. Had my wife with me as we drove around town and we were looking at some places. Ultimately, we might build on family property over on Walton Road. If you take Walton Road, the new Walton Road, and if you fell asleep and ran through the stop sign, you'd end up in my sister's yard.
Going to head to Goat Farm and Cat Ranch.
My dad's just south of there. My daughter just bought my aunt and uncle's old house, the Lasada's house. And so she's there and, and my sister's. And so, she's there and, and my sister's daughter and her husband bought my grandparents' old house up on the hill out there. The property across from Dollar General is my dad's field where he had cattle at one point. But I'm thinking, I want the two acres right across the street from Dollar General. That's where I'm building, but, so I'll always be close, but I might be closer. If I find somewhere nice nearby, I might just move in there.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I think I, I've read a lot and I've kind of, kind of feel like I've gotten to know you all a little better just through reading the minutes of the meetings. I would really look forward to working with you. Like I said, I think that not always agreeing is, is a good thing sometimes. I think that civil discourse is great. I'd be willing to, I, I look forward to learning a lot from you and maybe teaching you guys a little bit. But I think we would all be working for the same thing, making Buchanan, you know, life is better here, let's make it even, even better.
So, that was the last official question, but I have one more. Do you go by Bob, Robert, Rob?
Bob.
Bob. Well, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it, we appreciate your interest in the city.
Well, we got nine minutes, what are we gonna do now?
Thanks, Bob.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Will you take us, the residents, into consideration?
Always.
With your work?
I always have an open-door policy wherever I've been, South Bend Community School Corporation, with Cass County Transportation. My door is always open and, and, you know, I answer to them, but they answer to you.
Yes.
So ultimately, I answer to you. So, yeah, I would always be willing to listen to you.
Well, Bob, you got that right, we do answer to Norma.
We do.
I've probably seen her name in some of the agendas I've read through. Are you willing to?
Oh, you probably have. You notice we all changed our expression when she came in.
Yeah.
I didn't see when she came in, but I saw the look on your face.
Yeah, we're actually really lucky to have a lot of citizens like you.
I'm surprised no one else sat through my meeting, but maybe I'll sit and watch the next one.
Well, thank you again, we appreciate your time.
I, you've got my number if you need to reach me. I'm actually going out of town tomorrow for about a week and a half. My phone's always on, so give me a call if you need to. A pleasure meeting you all.
What relation are you to Margie that?
Margie's my aunt.
She's your aunt? Oh, okay. Those folks from the fair. You don't wanna shake his hand right now?
You just come out of the bathroom, all right, we'll pass on that.
Sorry to cut you off. Long and short, as I still have. I mean, I asked the question I asked in full session on purpose.
No, you were good, man, I didn't take any offense to it.
Okay, good.
No, you're within your right. Missed you this morning, Tony.
I missed you, so what, are you guys, are you guys going tomorrow?
Yes, right, yeah, because it's getting...
Where do you guys start at, maybe I'll get my ass out of that.
So, we both, he gets up, I get up at four-thirty, he gets up at four-forty-five, and then we meet downtown just before five. And we've timed it just right, we end up meeting somewhere right in town. Of course, it's easy to see, there's nobody there.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we'll do like the old days when you were interested in a gal and we'd just walk by your house and we'd throw stones.
Just throw stones.
Stones at the window.
The front two windows.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, but if your, if your wife wakes up and is mad at me, I'm not gonna take it.
She's gonna be mad at you.
I'm gonna point at Patrick.
Yeah, that's all right. Maybe you'll find being able to walk around tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Four-her bottle of scotch you're handing out a little bit? No, there you go, he says he's got glasses, he's like, oh, we got some bigger glasses around here. You good?
Yep.
Yeah, I got one in the car too, hell, there's two more.
You haven't, you haven't called me.
Uh, yeah, that would be great, actually.
What's been happening?
No, he's gotta call. Awesome, thanks, Tim.
Well, call me. You know my number?
He said you were complaining.
We looked around at the shot and I looked around and thought, oh, they got some baby cubs.
Baby cubs. Larry's a grown man, he needs big, big man cubs.
Yeah. Red Solo cup.
Not wrong. Hey, got you. I'm telling about it. Can't go wrong with your T-bomb, the T-bomb will wake you up.
Yeah, it does, it does. How do you think I'm always like?
I know, you're always so happy, no kidding. You've been stopping down seeing Mr. Payne every day, huh?
No, not Mr. Payne, I call my mom and Anna.
Oh, is she down there in the morning?
Yeah, she's, she's in at night.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we saw Leland, hey. Yeah, we saw Leland this morning. He was already there working at, every day.
Yeah, I've been in there a couple of times.
Yeah, I, I can't, I just, I have it at the house, so I just make my own note. Because he always asks us, Megan. So, you do it, no, you shake it up, I don't do anything fun or...
They work really strong.
Still good, though.
But I mean, you both, well, it's not gonna matter, it's everybody. They did us for a year.
Where's that?
Hey. Tomorrow, side shot, showing it. I know, you, you put one, it's like, I'm gonna sweep this organically, but... Quick on the draw. Yeah. Yes, I think you did.
Well, no, we just had terrible service.
I always felt like you guys should have my favorite show of old music during dead times.
We had really good service.
I got the mic, gotta be a little more PC, right? Is this being recorded also?
Yeah, I don't mind the price, but I don't mind being...
In the time I decided to wear a hat and be extremely casual. Are you giving it a single? Yeah, yeah, we're winning, winning. I told Patrick, I said, no, I'm just getting to a point where you did a dog and pony show for so long. You know, meet everybody else except Pat, it's like, no, this is what you're gonna get. This is what you're gonna get, it's not gonna change when it comes out of here, so if you don't like what you see, then stop looking. Right?
Are you ready, Brian?
I'm ready.
Okay, let's move on to contestant number two, Mr. Bryant. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
So, we appreciate your time and energy getting to know our community and being with us today. Please take the next two to three minutes and tell us about yourself, both professionally and personally.
Okay, so I grew up in Columbia City, Indiana, which is over by Fort Wayne. Went to Columbia City High School, I was an athlete, played varsity football and track. I got a track scholarship to go to St. Joseph's College in Rensselaer. I was a two-time All-American there and co-team captain. I graduated in nineteen ninety-eight with a V.S. in management. I worked various jobs, I have kind of a construction background. I did a vinyl siding job, carpet installation, I know how to do all my own handiwork, I do all my own projects, so I know how much things cost. I started with Walgreens in nineteen ninety-eight. I got promoted to store manager in two thousand and four in Elkhart, Indiana, is where I started as a store manager. I've managed five stores with Walgreens. I've relocated one and I opened a brand-new location. I'm currently at a store in South Bend, Indiana, but it's a pretty, pretty busy store, it's a six-and-a-half store. Personally, I have three children, Gentry, Ava, Sander. I'm happily married to my wife Jamie of ten years. And we live in Niles, just up the road, just off of Exit Five, so not very far. So, I've been to Buchanan several times and visited and had great experiences here.
Great.
Thank you.
Not every decision you make turns out as planned. Sometimes there is disappointment along the way. Please share a time when a project you were involved in did not yield the results that you had hoped for, and what did you learn from the process?
So, the project that I didn't yield quite the results that I wanted was, we had to relocate a store and just having some different logistics of the two teams. In the beginning of it, it was very challenging, making sure that both stores are running at the same time. So, there were some hiccups along the way, but the end result was really good. During that process, you have to keep two stores running. You are running your current store and you're opening your new store. So, there were some challenges in there, making sure that the new store is ready to go. You close the old store one night and you open the new store the next day. So, along the way, yeah, it was stressful and I could have done a few things better, but the end result was we opened on time, we stayed on budget, and made sure that we were ready to go.
Thank you. Since you were first notified as one of the finalists, what are some of the things you've done to prepare for this interview to learn about Buchanan?
Well, I've visited more often. I've, excuse me, I walked around the town, tried to familiarize myself even more. I've passed through several times. I've shopped here, I've done business up at Weldy's. But just getting to know the town and trying to research some of that, getting a feel, you know, visiting some of the restaurants, I've been to Lehman's, you know, I've talked to a few people. I asked, you know, I said to the bartender, I asked him about all the signs I saw in the yard, about bond proposals, and I wanted his feedback, and so he gave me some feedback. So, that's what I, I wanted to really get to know the town and that's where I kind of focused on was, you know, seeing, getting some opinions of, of the town and seeing what you're all about.
Very good, thank you.
Buchanan City Commission is looking for a leader who will serve our community with great leadership. Please share a time in the past three years that you have went above and beyond to provide excellent leadership in your current position.
So, during COVID, I was put in charge of COVID testing. So, that was new to all of us as a company, as a district. And so, during that process, I had to attend several conference calls, go over information that came down from our corporate office. Then I had to host conference calls with my district, explain the process, explain all of the standing operating procedures, because a lot of people were uneasy about it. They were worried, you know, about the process, is it safe? And then I personally went to several stores where I trained people to show them the process, to make them feel at ease, to let them know that the standing operating procedures that we had in place were safe. And then also pointed out some of the difficulties with the machine, watchouts. And my boss didn't ask me to do any of that. He didn't ask me to go personally to those stores and train them, I did that on my own. He actually found out after I did that, that I went through that extra effort to make sure, because, you know, I felt a responsibility to everyone that I needed to give as much hands-on as I could and just to put people's minds at ease that the procedure was safe.
Can you describe your management style to us?
Management style is my employees finally, find me very friendly and fair and consistent. I understand that they have lives outside of work, so I try to work with them anytime that they're having any personal challenges. But first and foremost, I like to be a coach, a trainer. I want my team to be well-informed, because the more well-informed that they are, it is easier for me in my job, and especially if I have a team member go out on disability or leave, I've got a backup person that's very knowledgeable. I like to have people that are very good at what they do, but I like to spread that out across the team to make sure that I have everyone given an opportunity to learn and operate efficiently, efficiently. So that way, if somebody does go down, then we have someone in place to back them up. But for the most part, very, very thorough, I follow up. And my employees find me to be very patient. So, I often get that when I'm dealing with any customer complaints. Everybody is, they always say, how are you so patient? So, that's, that would be my management style. Thank you.
In your opinion, what are the two most important issues that you plan to tackle as our city manager?
Well, we need to get more business in town, number one. And number two, we need to have growth in our population. I've seen a lot of empty lots, some storefronts that were empty. So, to ease the tax burden on its citizens, we need to get more business in here. We need to network. One thing that I do as a store manager is detail businesses. I created this little sample packet, I was gonna show you. But I like to go out detailing once a month. And, you know, we visit doctors' offices because if you have a good relationship with a doctor's office, then they write you more prescriptions. So, that would be my two priorities is to help attract businesses anywhere I can, work with your existing programs that you already have in place, and just be very open and inviting to all the townspeople and help them understand what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish. You guys have some very big lofty goals and a plan for the future, so I wanna be a part of that and that's where my focus would be.
Providing excellent customer service is critical in Buchanan. We take great pride in responding to our customers. Please share a time when you were able to solve a challenging citizen customer concern using excellent professional skills.
So, I often deal with that. We upset customers coming to me frequently, you know, looking for the manager. But one in particular situation was our pharmacy is an open twenty-four hours and one of our patients showed up about two minutes till closing at nine o'clock. So, they needed much-needed diabetic medication for their son. So, my manager reached out to me, said he had a very upset customer in the store. And I always have my phone on me, I always respond to texts or phone calls that are emergency. And so, I explained to that manager that we can get that medication at the twenty-four-hour Walgreens, which is located a few minutes from my store. And I told him to contact the pharmacist, explain the situation, and they were able to transfer that prescription and get the much-needed medication for the patient.
Thank you. Please describe two of your proudest moments in your professional experience.
One of those moments was when I opened a brand-new location in Mishawaka. Just because we build it doesn't mean that the customers are gonna show up. I mean, you've seen probably some locations that have closed. So, even though you get it, you've still gotta build the business. Even like I said, with detailing... Even like I said, with detailing, going in, visiting local businesses, uh, letting them know that, you know, what we have to offer, making sure that the store has a C and O appearance, that the shelves are stocked, that you have excellent customer service, because a lot of times with a new location, doesn't, uh, guarantee that you'll have repeat business. If they have a bad experience the first time, they may not come back. So you got to be on top of your game. So I opened that brand-new location and within, uh, five years, it was doing over three million dollars in sales annually. Um, and it's still, uh, still growing today. Uh, I talked to that other manager the other day, and it has done quite well. So that's one of the very proud moments that I've had. Another was, again, the COVID testing. Um, you know, I was put in charge of a brand-new thing, and, um, I went above and beyond to help, uh, my fellow store managers and teams around the district to make sure that they were safe. And I did get several compliments, uh, from those teammates that reached out to my boss and let me know how good of a job I did training them and explaining the process thoroughly to them, so that they did feel safe and comfortable doing it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, what are your three greatest traits that you would employ to build and foster an engaging relationship with the staff, the residents, the ci- the city commission, and our business community?
Um, good trade is a good communicator. Um, always, uh, wanting to communicate with my team, um, and make sure that any problems arise, that, that I communicate that to them. Um, my boss, you know, if there's a problem that comes up, me and him, we text throughout the day. Um, if it's a phone call that needs to be had, I will give him a call and say, "Hey, we got an issue here." You know, "I need some help resolving it," and, um, so good communicator, number one. Uh, number two, I always like to let my employees know that I have an open-door policy, you know, come to me with any problem, and I want to make sure that I can provide solutions to you. I can work with you. Um, and we work as a team. So, and then the third thing is I am, uh, I'm very friendly. Uh, I like to, uh, meet people, you know, I like to walk around the store, greet people, ask them how they're doing, ask them if there's anything that I can help them with, or, you know, offer solutions to them. If there's something that we don't have, I'll give them a solution to help them find it. You know, if it means driving to another store to pick up some merchandise so I can have it there the next day, ordering it from online. But that would be, uh, my third one is just being extremely friendly and open and communicative.
Yeah, what is the most useful criticism you've ever received, and what did you learn from it?
Um, being too nice, uh, thing. I've had some criticism over that, um, but...
Me too.
So as an example, as an example, you know, um, you may have an employee that likes to, uh, leave early. You know, maybe they have something in their personal life they have to leave early for, so I'm accommodating with that. But if it's happening too often, you know, I keep track of those things, leaving early, coming in late. I'm very understanding of having a life outside of work. So, um, yeah, being nice, I have learned from that. Um, you know, I've been taken advantage of a few times, but I have done this long enough to know, uh, when to say no. You know, I don't have a problem telling someone they can't do something or delivering a hard message to someone, uh, because it's necessary. Thank you.
Excuse me. What tools or techniques do you use to ensure the city commission is always kept apprised of major issues that arise within the city?
Um, well, first and foremost, watching the news, um, looking at social media. You know, that's usually the fastest form of news, you know, on Facebook or Twitter, Instagram, any of those. Um, paying attention to, uh, what's going on in your state, you know, if they're passing some major legislation. Um, you know, typically at Walgreens, if there's a major thing that's being passed, you know, we will get notifications through our emails. But, um, for the most part, just staying in tune with social media, see what people are saying. Um, you get a lot by reading the comments, you know, you see an article on there, and then you go down to the comments and start scrolling through there, and you see what people are really saying, um, what they're unhappy about, you know, and, and how they disagree. So if there was something that I felt needed to be addressed, or something, uh, that the council needs to hear about, I'm going to reach out to any one of you and let you know, like, "Hey, I saw this, uh, today. Uh, I hope you, you know, are also in the loop on this, you know, we need to get on top of this." Um, so, yeah, just staying in tune that way.
Our new city manager will need to be a regional voice and foster excellent relationships with our neighboring communities. Please share with us how you will build lasting positive relationships with adjacent community leaders.
Um, well, I definitely would want to network. I would want to reach out to other, uh, local governments, you know, talk to other city managers, um, find out what they're doing. I do that all the time with, uh, what I do now. I am always reaching out and talking to another store manager, saying, "Hey, what are you doing, you know, for this? What type of display are you building, et cetera?" So I definitely would want to, um, especially in my first ninety days, start learning my neighbors, um, you know, talking to them. Maybe even have a chance to meet up with them, have a lunch or something, get to know them, ask them for advice. But I definitely want to build bridges and have a partnership with the surrounding communities, um, because that's a network, you know, once you build some relationships, they would also help feed you information of any problems that happened, you know. I like to visit other Walgreens and see what they're doing right and see what they're doing wrong. So if I'm driving through a neighboring city, I'm going to look at something and have, get an idea, like, "Hey, I saw this," and, you know, I might present, you know, that information to you, like, "Hey, this is what we need in our town." Um, so yeah, I would definitely, uh, be big at networking and reaching out and trying to build those relationships with the, with the neighboring cities and towns.
Thank you. Uh, financial stewardship is critical to our operations, and if you've had a chance to review our budget, is there anything that stands out to you that, uh, you see as something that needs an intention?
Yeah, um, so right now, it looks like your expenditure is a little higher than your revenue. Um, and it looks like you have some, uh, incoming grants that didn't quite meet expectations for what you proposed in the budget. So that's something that, um, I would want to help support, you know, any grant applications, um, that I could be a part of, um, and the research that I could assist with. Um, and the biggest thing again would be bringing business into the town. You generate more revenue, uh, with more businesses. Um, the more businesses you get in here, then that helps with your tax burden, and it seems like that's a big issue uh, with your citizens is how much they have to pay in taxes. And so the more businesses you get here, the more, you know, homes, uh, of people, you know, moving to the city. You've got some great projects, uh, for the downtown area that would definitely generate, I think, uh, a, a good base for people to want to move here. So if we can get those projects going and see them to fruition, I think this town is going to really explode in population.
Thank you.
Many, many of the projects that we hope to achieve over the next five years involve grant writing and economic development. Please detail your current and/or previous experience in grant writing and successful economic development projects.
Um, well, I do not have any experience in grant writing, um, so I just want to be honest with that. Um, but I am a quick study. Uh, if there's something I don't know, I'm going to research the heck out of it and learn, because I think that's a big opportunity. Um, that was one of the things I noticed, like I said, in the budget, that, um, we need to get some much-needed funds that the taxpayers don't have to come out of their pocket. So that would definitely be an area where I would want to learn. And, you know, again, with that perking, talk to, you know, another city manager or another, uh, government agency that, that's nearby and see if they're doing anything, what works for them. Um, any tips or advice they could give me would be, would be helpful. And if there's any, uh, classes available or meetings that I could go to, I'd be more than happy to go to those type of, of meetings where I can learn that process.
Thank you.
All righty, we're going to fast forward to May twenty-four. It's time for the city commission to evaluate you, uh, evaluate your first year as our city manager. Please share with us what you hope to accomplish in your first year in office.
Um, in my first year in office, I definitely would like to see some more businesses pop up in this town. That's what my focus is going to be on, is assisting with that, with going out and detailing a business, um, and showing them, you know, what this town has to offer. Um, I would like to see more new homes. Uh, you know, I've done some research on realestate.com and saw a lot of new homes as we were driving through, uh, the area. So that's a good sign. You've got some new homes going up. You've got some empty plots that, uh, are available for more construction. Um, and so I would want to see a successful year with some of our programs that we have. We need to get this bond proposal, uh, to pass. Um, so that would be, um, something where we've got projects in works, um, that we've got them going. We've used those funds to, uh, continue the, uh, big picture, the big, um, efforts that you all have done, the hard work you've put in. I know a lot of you have put probably several hours in on those, uh, projects, so you want to see them, uh, happen as well. So I definitely want to make sure that I am, uh, very supportive of that, working closely alongside you.
Thank you.
When you consider all the components of municipal management, what one area do you believe you truly excel in?
Um, working as a team, um, you know, I'm going to rely on my department heads. Um, I can't do it all by myself, you know, in order to keep the city running and looking good. You know, I want to have a clean meat norly. That's my thing. Um, so I want to work closely with, uh, the street department, making sure that we're ready for Thrill on the Hill, you know, that we're ready for our come, uh, summer concert series, um, that, uh, people drive through Buchanan and that's a place they want to come back to. It's not just a couple of traffic signals and they move on. Um, so definitely, um, would want to lean on my department heads, see what they're doing well. You know, I don't want to change what they're doing well. If there's something that my twenty-plus years of Walgreens, uh, business expertise can help them, then I definitely would want to work with them to expand upon that. Thank you.
What are the most critical things that you will do as a first-time city manager to enhance your ability to succeed?
Um, I think the most critical thing, uh, in learning, uh, this new, uh, position is, um, one, I would look to the interim manager, see how much knowledge he can, uh, give me. Um, and that would be one of my questions would be, how long would he be in place to assist me in my first ninety days? Um, you know, reach out to Frank. Uh, Frank, uh, seems very personable and like he would be the type of person that could be a mentor. Um, and so I definitely would want to gain that, uh, years of experience that he had running Saint Joe. If he'd be willing to share that information with me, I definitely would hope that he could be like a mentor-type person and I could form a good, uh, working, uh, relationship with him where I can gain some of that knowledge from him.
Thank you. Over the next several years, the city of Buchanan has several water and sewer infrastructure projects ahead of us. Uh, what is your basic understanding of utilities and how would you plan, uh, to sharpen those skills?
Well, the more, uh, businesses and more new homes, you're going to need, uh, a good infrastructure with the water system to handle, uh, the more toilet flushing and the more, uh, lift stations, um, and just general sewer problems you can have when you start to, uh, build quickly. Uh, you want to be able to handle, uh, handle that. Your power grid needs to be able to handle, you know, more new businesses and, uh, the electricity that they use. Um, so that's something where you would want to make sure that all those systems are, um, current, up to date, and, you know, um, that we are maintaining them, uh, well, so that we don't have a problem where we build too quickly and that we can't handle the flow of water.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Hall, we're about to wrap up things, so please take the next two or three minutes and tell us why you are the right fit and ideal candidate to lead Buchanan.
I think I'm the right fit, because I truly believe in those projects that you have, um, um, in the, in the future here. You've got some waterfront projects, um, that look great. You've got, um, some, uh, projects where you're going to introduce, um, living quarters for people, because if you bring new business in and you don't have a place for people to live, uh, that creates an issue. Um, but I've looked at those plans and I think they're fantastic. I think that would be something exciting to be a part of. Um, like I said, I've done, you know, all my own, uh, remodeling and upgrades to my home, so I'm a builder. You know, I love construction. I love being around it. My father was a construction worker, and so I love being a part of that. So I truly believe that, um, you guys are doing great things. I think this city is on the verge of really a great growth opportunity. Um, I can see it just really being a place where people, really in the next several years here, start to talk about, "Hey, I want to go to Buchanan for dinner. I want to go, you know, to have, be at the outdoor, uh, concert theater." Um, and I just think that that is something that I could excel at. I can use my twenty-plus years of Walgreens, um, and my, uh, business sense where I can assist in bringing businesses in, um, because you want something that is exciting uh, for a potential home buyer, uh, you know, a tourist. Um, tourism is something that, uh, is, you know, much-needed capital, uh, for the town. Uh, you've got Red Bud, um, which brings in a lot of, uh, tourism and visitors to the town. So I think that, um, I am a good fit. Um, I think that I am, uh, very easygoing as far as, uh, friendly and open with communication, but yet I can make tough choices when I need to make tough choices. So, um, I think that I am definitely a good fit for this role.
Do you have any questions for us as a city commission?
Um, yeah, so, one, uh, if chosen, how long would, uh, Tim, uh, be in place, uh, during, uh, the first ninety days of this?
As long as it takes.
As long as it takes.
I was going to say forever.
Forever.
Somehow this became definite.
There's lots of things going on behind the scenes on that. Um, the city, I don't want to be too ex- well, I don't feel, I feel I can be as explicit as I want to. The city needs lots of help. So Tim has really proven himself, but Tim doesn't want to stay on full-time.
Okay.
But Tim wants to, and the commission as a whole, we just have to work out, you know, keeping him on to work with the city manager as much as possible to move forward, because we do have so much going on.
Yeah, yeah, you definitely have a lot of...
But he's, he's expressed a willingness to stay, and until you feel comfortable that you wouldn't need his help.
Stay there long and just, just so I would not be in your way.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, so I've seen in the job description that you have to maintain a residence within the first ninety days, um, with the...
We don't, we don't want to talk about residency. It's been ruled that it's not a condition of employment, so we don't even talk about residency.
Okay. That's what I was going to say anyhow. It's a non-issue.
It's a non-issue. Okay. That, yeah, I mean, we had already started looking... Yeah, I mean, we'd already started looking just to be prepared, so that was definitely a question that I had. Well, the next part of the process, you're going to evaluate, obviously, these three interviews. What's your timeline like before you make a final decision and will there be any more rounds of interviews?
That's a good question, Frank.
Say, Frank.
So the commission at the end, there's one more interview after you, Brian. And so the commission at that time will decide whether they wanna bring a couple of candidates back or if they wanna make a contingent offer. If they make any offer, it'll be conditioned and conditional on contract negotiations and a background check, which is a comprehensive background check, which is driving, criminal, civil, credit, and the Michigan State sexual registrants. All that stuff goes into the background check and it's a third-party administrator that does that. So those two things would be conditioned on any offer that they may make. But I don't know what they'll decide to do today, but those are their choices. Or say, there's always that one, hate to say this, but there's always one we don't like anyone and we wanna start over. That's always an option too.
Okay, fair enough.
But Frank, do you have a timeline in your head of when we're going to be making an offer and?
It all is up to you, how you feel after the three interviews. If you're confident in one of the candidates, then you could extend an offer today, conditional offer on today. You could also bring candidates back, totally up to you, how you feel at the end of the three. I'm prepared to go either way with you.
Okay.
That answers your.
Yeah, yeah, that answers.
Thanks for asking, 'cause I just found out too.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something that I wanted to know. And as far as, obviously, the city manager role, you're gonna deal with some emergency situations. What's like one of the biggest emergency situations that your previous manager had to deal with in the last few years?
Sinkholes, I would guess. Water main breaks. I would think that, or, you know, fires, obviously. But water, water main breaks.
I think the West Wind fires would be the most.
Yeah, the West Wind fire.
Norma?
Norma's not a problem.
You know, but even then, it's a matter of making sure the right people are taking care of the, the emergency. I'm just trying to think if there's anything.
Well, I mean, we've got a very strong public safety department. Very passionate people, so I think things that could have easily escalated quickly in the township surrounding us, they have the same passion. The people are very dedicated to what they do. And I think, I think they make the city manager's job fairly simple, that they, they're very attentive to being on the point and taking care of their necessary emergencies, so.
Very good. And then just one final thing before we're wrapping up. I was, I prepared this, this is just a sample of like my detail.
So can you, if you don't mind, can you tell us, so when you said you'd do a detail, can you explain what that is?
So you go into like a doctor's office and you bring with you information, package of information of what we provide as services, maybe you go into the services of the facility. Maybe they're unaware that you prescription delivery, so you provide that information to them. I pulled all this information off of your website. That is just one sample of something that I think that I could create this type of program. But all that stuff was available to downtown restaurant business. Get your desired program, your technology program, and then consult.
So you would take this for a prospective business and you'd try and do a sales pitch for them?
Yeah, basically just say, hey, can I talk to your, you know, your manager and find out who the owner is? And then just ask for a number of times. Tell them, hey, this is based on how you're standing, we've got big things planned. We would like to invite you to, to look at this potential business and just start a relationship. Maybe they say no, maybe they say, yeah, sure. But it gets word of mouth out there, you know, that, hey, if you know, it's expanded, they're looking for businesses. So that's a big part of that as well in that work. So, but yeah, that's something that, you know, that's one of my areas that certainly that I have up here.
And I think that, I mean, something like Rich Murphy and Ashley.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Cause I, I think that's, I, I appreciate that explanation because it is a very forward-thinking manner that I believe all of us have looked for over the years. Dan was on the commission years ago and us at very varied degrees over the last couple of years. So I really do appreciate that, that that's something that you're focused on.
Is that it then, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you can keep that. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Norma? Norma, Norma, Norma. We're, we're not, we're not taking public questions. Thank you though. I'm, I'm in trouble.
No, actually, after he leaves.
We're, we're trying to keep all of the questions the same for all of the candidates.
We're gonna have water and sewer problems.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's not something I wanna deal with.
Yeah. We start letting the candidates from you, Norma, nobody will apply. I know.
Norma's been my consistent. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Ken Brad.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank, do we need to go in, will we have to go into closed session after this? Will we have to convene in the closed session?
So the Michigan Open Meetings Act does not allow you to go into any kind of closed session at all. Your closed session ended when you chose your candidates. Everything has to be, I know it's not what people like to hear, but everything has to be done in open sessions. Your discussion.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we follow protocol because I didn't know what protocol was and I didn't see it on the agenda. So I, I mean, I'm not asking to go into closed session, I just, you know, and it would be more comfortable.
Yeah, you're right.
But on the other hand, I don't really mind feeling uncomfortable, so.
Well, I just, if I can, what, what was your question?
So I've got a hundred and seventy-four, so I missed the last one, so I don't know if we want that, since it has to be open. I want that discussion about the other two.
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I'm someone who likes to get all my information and then marinate on it.
Yeah, yes.
So I don't, I'm not in the position to make a decision today.
Good, because then that'd allow me to watch the, the last interview, it's all the same questions, so as Dan had pointed out, right? Conversation too.
I mean, yeah, so just to set expectations, I don't see us making a decision this afternoon. I'd like to, I'd like to sit.
I don't feel like, would Tim be here?
Over my notes?
We're not under a shotgun to do it, you know, I really don't feel that way.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, thankfully we have him sitting there and there's no, you know, we're not in panic mode yet.
Yeah.
Tim's got a grin on his face, so I don't, maybe we should be, but.
Well, you can still come in here at six AM, we're still.
Why are you leaving, Mark?
Huh?
Why are you leaving?
I've got a prior engagement.
I'll, I'll ask your questions in the next one.
It's open meeting.
It's an open meeting?
Twice.
I'm sorry?
Open meeting, I heard it twice.
It is, but we're just, we're trying to keep the questions so they're the same for each candidate, so just so you know. And actually, there is, there is a place for public comment at the end of the meeting. So after the next one, there is a place for public comment if you wanna say something.
I have a question with nothing to do with interviews.
Sure.
Someone asked me and I couldn't answer them, do the water increases apply to the water portion of the bill or the entire bill?
There's a breakdown within our, essentially it's the entire bill.
Kinda thought that's how that'd go, yeah. But thanks for answering.
So do you guys have to hold another meeting if you're not making your decision today, like a discussion meeting?
Well, we could, or we could do it.
Or we could do it at a meeting on Monday, a Monday meeting.
I would imagine we'd wanna schedule a.
When is, when do we have a meeting next Monday?
Next Monday? Do we, while we don't know what's on that agenda yet?
No, there, I mean, I don't know, I mean, there's quite a few things on the agenda for Monday, even though we don't have the agenda. I'm assuming we're gonna get that tomorrow, you know, we'll get the agenda tomorrow.
I'm thinking we don't have a special meeting.
Yeah, we'll see a reason to have a special meeting. I don't know, let's see how the next one goes.
I, I would think we're gonna talk about it for an hour.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna make a Monday meeting very long, probably.
We could call a special meeting before the regular meeting.
I don't know, I'm gonna squeeze that in, I can't do it this week, I'm just.
I don't mind having a special meeting, so.
I won't come, go ahead.
I'll provide you for whatever you gotta put in on your agenda, so the agenda language and stuff like that. For the conditional offer, I'll provide all that to you.
Okay.
Whatever you decide to put in.
Sure. I mean, yeah, I, I think maybe if we did have a discussion about the candidates, it would, it would be way too long to have it a regular meeting. I think we should just make the decision or the formal announcement at a, at a regular meeting, but have a special meeting to. Otherwise, yeah, we'll have a four-hour meeting.
The city marshal has an eight-hour meeting.
Oh my gosh, wow, do they have an intermission?
I don't know.
I would need a break.
Lunch?
I was just saying, we, we need to do lunch and have rest re-frames.
That battery plant, megasite changing the zoning of it, and they went on eight hours. The planning commission voted no, and then the city council will be there to rezone it. Well, I don't know if you call it the next morning or whatever, but it's one of those big megasites.
That's a cool project.
Once it gets started though, you can hardly get rid of it, you can't stop it.
Uh, the state senator's trying to stop it right now.
So what is your plan, you're on it then as far as?
Well, that's what we were just kinda talking about.
I know, I was away, but.
I don't wanna, I don't think that we wanna have a dis, a general discussion on the candidates at a regular Monday meeting. Just because it was gonna make the meeting way too long. But maybe we should next week figure out what day might work next week to have a special meeting and come in and have our discussion.
You got these guys hanging though for what, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Well, I, I mean, it should be figured, if we have a meeting next week and then we can have, we have a meeting Monday.
He's talking about calling a special meeting.
But I'm saying if we, so we have a meeting Monday, but we're not gonna, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have a decision by Monday. Unless we have a special meeting before then, and I really don't have any other time to meet this week. I don't know what anyone else is scheduled for.
That raised another quarter point.
So that's what I'm saying, if we meet, it would be the, the twenty-second is our next commission meeting. That would be the night we would make it.
Okay, well, could I ask, if we hash it, I know you don't wanna make a decision, but could we at least?
Have a discussion today?
Hey, yeah.
Answer. I don't mind hearing what you guys.
So the pros and the cons.
Yeah.
My only advice and from doing this for a number of times is that you don't wanna rush into a decision, but you don't wanna go two or three weeks beyond your interview. The candidates really start to wane after that because their, their interest level can drop because they don't think that they're, yeah, I would, five to ten days is about the time you wanna try to ramp it up. If you can't, if you're not bringing them back for another interview and you're gonna let them sit idle, I would try to ramp it up.
But I mean, we, so we wouldn't necessarily have to make a decision at a regular city commission meeting. We could have a special meeting, talk about it, and then make our decision.
I think we do have a special meeting.
I, I'd like to do it next week sometime if you're all available.
So for me, for me, a Thursday's a hard no, does anybody else have a Monday?
So we're, so I have to go back to Pennsylvania for a funeral at the end of next week, so I would need to do it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday we already have a meeting, so we don't wanna do. I could do, we could do Tuesday or Wednesday, neither is fine with me.
You told me what day, guys?
I'm gone next week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave Sunday or Saturday and I will be back on Thursday.
Come on, is this money?
Like a meet for fifteen.
Stephen Howard, you had two weeks.
That's two weeks out.
Yeah, I just say that's.
That might just have to be what it is.
Well, you know, I can tell you from experience, after two weeks, you know, and if you're chasing a job, you're really chasing a job and you're interviewing for other jobs, and Frank just took and told us that.
Well, let's, I tell you, let's get through the last interview and then we can have our discussion and maybe things will become clearer, we won't really need to.
Just make a short discussion Monday night, make a decision Monday night.
I mean, it could be, let's see what happens with the next one and do whatever.
I just don't think it would be a short discussion, especially if Mark isn't able to participate in it.
But if we're gonna do it on Monday and I'm able to have the time to review the last interview, same question, same setting, it's not gonna change my opinion.
You'll be able to see our discussion after you're gone, and you'll be able to see what.
We can work together and make sure I get that done and I'd be happy to, you're.
You wanna get going on this next interview?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
Sure, Frank.
I'm gonna ask her because it's being recorded like Friday this weekend, get it to you so that we can review.
I mean, I, I've got some time to play with, I was trying to, but if we're gonna, if everybody's okay starting it now. Brian, Brian only took a half.
Call me Mark.
I would be happy to.
I wish you would.
What would Friday the twelfth look like for everybody?
Oh, and you're not gonna hear Monday regardless. Okay, well, we'll, we'll figure this out.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And do you prefer Benjamin or Ben?
Ben is fine.
Okay, very good, we asked, and then the other one, I figured we'd get it out of the way this time. Thank you for that.
Excuse me if I seem a little nervous, I haven't had an interview in twenty-two years, so.
And then to have one like this makes it even more interesting.
Five people staring at you. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right. So thanks for coming, we appreciate your time and energy, getting to know our community and being with us today. Please take the next two to three minutes and tell us about yourself both personally and professionally.
Sure. Well, my name is Ben Eldridge, I am live in Goshen, Indiana. I'm married to my wife, Michelle, we've been married for thirty years. We dated for four, we're high school sweethearts. We have two children. My son played college football, attended college in Ohio, he is now a fireman for Elkhart City. My daughter graduated from Purdue University a couple of years ago, she works for a charter school in Indianapolis. We just had our first grandchild. As far as my employment, I've been with the town in Millersburg since March of two thousand and one. It's kind of a, a different story, I started out working for the street department. Started the maintenance department, mowing, building maintenance, working in the trucks and stuff and literally sweeping the streets with the broom, shoveling the dirt into tobacco and taking and dumping it. They had a guy coming part-time from another community doing their wastewater, he just wanted to go back there full-time. So the town council and the state worked with me on getting my license, took over the wastewater. They had a similar situation with the water department. Town council and the state worked with me on getting my water licenses. After so long, I, I needed more of a challenge, so I asked to develop a community development, an economic development group. Town council supported that, I started our main street group. We did a bunch of improvements, green space, downtown, pavilions, sidewalks, roads, street lights, stuff like that. And then I, I needed more of a challenge, so I asked to take over the park department a couple of years ago. And so in the last couple of years with the park department, you know, we knew how to add basketball courts, volleyball courts. We redid our baseball diamonds, we now have two leagues coming in and using our, our park that we didn't have before. And last year we built a football field and the school corporation there uses that field as their home field for their junior football league. And we now have this year a semi-pro football team coming in that uses that as their home field as well, so. Yeah, so that, that's about it, I've been there for, like I said, a little over twenty-two years. And it's been a blessing for my family. Thank you.
Not every decision you'll make turns out as planned. Sometimes there's disappointment along the way. Please share a time when a project you were involved in did not yield the results that you had hoped for and what did you learn from the process?
Sure. You know, I've been pretty successful in, in the projects that I've come to the council with in Millersburg. Primarily because I, I learned early on in my career to have all my i's dotted and t's crossed before I went to the council. And so I wouldn't say I've, I've had a project that didn't happen, but I've had a few projects that in the process of planning, things didn't go as I thought they would. And we've had to kinda stop. In the process of planning, things didn't go as I thought they would, um, and we've had to kinda stop, pivot, and go a different direction. And what I learned from that is, um. You have to be adaptable, um, and, and you have to really rely on the people that are on your team. And, uh, be patient, and, and it'll all work out, it may not work out the way you envisioned it, the way you wanted it to, but in the end, it'll all work out if you include your team, and, uh, just stay focused on what you're doing.
Very good, thank you. Uh, since you were first notified as a finalist, uh, for this interview, uh, what have you done to educate yourself on the city of Buchanan?
Sure, so I've been to Buchanan, um, a few times since actually applying for the position. Of course, I ate at some of the, the local restaurants, um, and, uh, I have, uh. Looked at, at your, your budget, your master plan, um, I have, uh, I think it was last week I came into town, had, um, lunch at one of your restaurants, spoke to the restaurant owner. Got his thoughts on, on Buchanan, uh, went to the library, spoke to an individual there, spoke to, uh, Michael Rollin, the community foundation, uh, met with him, uh, picked his brain a little bit about Buchanan. So, yeah, I, I've been here a few times, visited your restaurants, walked around, um, uh, walked around your downtown area, uh, actually. Went to your wastewater and pulled it away there, or pulled it up and just kinda looked around, um, and a lot of praying, so, yeah. Yeah, a lot of studying, a lot of praying, and, and talking with some members of the community.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Ben, the, uh, Buchanan City Commission is looking for a leader who will serve our community with great leadership. Please share a time in the past three years that you went above and beyond to provide excellent leadership in your current position.
Um, so in the last three years, we had a, uh. We had a, an old, um, I don't wanna say blighted, but old rundown town hall, and we really needed a new town hall, we needed a bigger police station, um, and a community center. So, it's kind of, I, I've been in Millersburg longer than anybody else there, so they kind of all turned to me, um, and, and leading that charge and, and getting that done. I attended county meetings, um, I went down to Indianapolis to, um, when we applied for grants, uh, to meet with people down there. Uh, worked with the, the engineering firm, the contractors, um, and really kinda walked along a- as the project went. And, uh. Now we have a, a beautiful town hall, a beautiful police department, a beautiful community center, um, and then after that was constructed. The old town hall that was right next to the, where we built the new one, um, I had that one taken down, turned it into green space, we built like an outdoor type. Amphitheater looking pavilion, um, we're gonna start having our farmers markets and, and community events there, so.
Cool, thank you.
Please describe your management style.
Um, so I have a open door policy, um, you know, I'll talk to anybody, I'll treat anybody with respect. I'll treat them how I wanna be treated, I think in my dealing with other, uh, team members in Millersburg is. If there's a complaint, if they're upset about something, a lot of times they just wanna be heard, they want somebody to listen to them. And they don't always want somebody to, to come back and, and solve their problem for them, but they just wanna be heard. And I, I think that's helped me a lot over the last several years, um, just having an open door policy, come and talk to me and let's work through this. So I've been very laid back, um. And, and, and I, I picked that up from a lot of my council members. They, they don't get really upset and lose their cool, they just listen to you and then help you work through your problems.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what are the two most important issues you plan to tackle as our city manager?
Sure, so, um. I think, i- i- in my opinion, looking at what I, your, your records. I think the biggest problem right now, not problem, maybe the biggest hurdle for Buchanan right now, is, is the finances, and. And I say that, you know, looking at your budget, um, or, I'm sorry, your audits, and, and from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, you had a net position gain. From twenty twenty, twenty-one, a net position gain, twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, you lost something, I think it was seven percent, your net position. Uh, looking at your, your budget that, that I was given, that has the end date of, of June of twenty twenty-three. It looks as though you're really relying on your utilities to make up deficiencies in your general fund. Which to me seems kinda scary for Buchanan, because, you know, you guys just had a, a big wastewater project, um, and you've got a big DPW project coming up, and, and you got infrastructure projects downtown. And not to mention the, I don't know if this is taboo to bring this up, but you had the school bond, bought it last night, and, and, you know, reading through your minutes over the last five, six months, you know, there's been people in and out. In support of it and not support of it, um, I think in the last newsletter, you, you. You have a very good article with a pie chart on how you spend your taxes and, 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 uh. I, I think you've all done very well at trying to explain to the community that you've kind of inherited a mess. And, uh, that, that you're all trying to be accountable to the community and, and operate as efficiently and effectively, so I think. On the outside looking in, and what I've seen and what I've read, the, uh, the budget is the biggest thing, um, or your, your finances. And then once you get into it, you just need to find creative ways to, to finance things, you need to prioritize what's most important, what can wait. Utilize state grants, TIF areas, and, and stuff like that, um. Yeah, I, I think the finances are, are probably the biggest hurdle right now for the town, for the city.
Providing excellent customer service is critical in Buchanan, we take great pride in responding to our customers. Please share a time when you were able to solve challenging, uh, citizen concerns using excellent personal skills.
Right, so, you know, if, if, if I were offered this position, one of the, the top three things, one, the, number one of the top three things that I was going to tackle first is. Is, um. Community, uh, customer service, um, you have to have. Your community behind you to, to really move your city forward, you need their support, you need to, they need to understand why you're doing the things you're doing, and so on and so forth, um, so, um. Making sure we had, uh, good, uh, customer relations is, is extremely important. In, in Millersburg, um, you know, there's really no place to hide, it's, it's a population of a thousand people, um, and, uh, there's no place to hide, and. You know, you just, like I said, uh, open door policy, you just talk to people, you listen to their complaints, um. You make an effort to try to help them solve their problems, um, and, and in a long way, a- along the way, you know, when I started in Millersburg. In, in two thousand and one, um, Millersburg was a very small farming community, and I was an outsider coming in, and so I was kinda warned of that, that's gonna be tough, and they had a lot of turnover. And I, I took a beating that first couple of years there in Millersburg, um, but, you know, just staying after it, and showing up on their doors when they need help, and. And trying to talk them through their problems, it, it's, it's really turned around, um. And, uh, and now I have people approaching me on the streets, just, uh, hey, you know, downtown looks great, you're doing a good job, thank you for this, thank you for that, and it's not so much. Please leave anymore, so, um, you know, you just.
You put that nicely.
Yeah.
You just, you just talk to them, um, you talk to them, let them know that their, their problems matter, and, and you're, you're gonna help them if you can.
Uh, looking through your resume, obviously we noted several accomplishments, uh, is there two that stand out to you, uh, in the course of your time in your current position that professionally are proud of?
You know, the first one i- is when I got my, uh, certification in wastewater, um. The, the big stake in Indiana was I demo tried to trick people with their test, their certification tests, and, um. I, I can't remember what the percentage was of, of the people who passed the first time they took the test, um, but I was much like I am today, I mean, cold hands and just. And, and I went in there and I studied, and I took the test, and I passed it the first time around, so that's probably my biggest accomplishment. Not, I won't say my biggest accomplishment, that, that's the first thing I'm most proud of. Secondly is, is how we've, we've brought the community together, um, we, we had an old, an old community festival, it was called Farmer's Day, that was getting kinda stale and dying out, and. The people that were doing it wanted to back away from it, so, you know, I had formed this main street group, this five oh one C three, and we decided we would take it over, we'd move it downtown to, uh, bring. People downtown to the restaurants that were there and, and the local businesses, um. And, uh, you know, that first night, uh, just walking around, uh, the downtown area, and, and just see people enjoy themselves and, and say, hey, this is great, we're glad you moved it down here. You know, it used to be out in the park, and we had this huge park, and people just kinda bounced around all over, and, and bringing it downtown, it centralized it, and everybody had to communicate with each other, and they had a good time on. So, you know, I think that was probably my second favorite accomplishment is, is just bringing the community together like we did that.
Wonderful.
So, and, and the next several years after that.
Great, thanks, Ben.
What are your three greatest traits you would employ to build and foster an engaging relationship with the staff, our residents, the city commission, and our business community?
My three greatest traits? Well, you know. What you see is what you get, um, I, I, I don't hide anything from anybody, um, I don't wanna say I'm blunt, um, but. You know, I'm gonna be honest with you, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what the problem is, what the struggle is, I'm gonna tell you what, what happened that was really great, um. I'm, I'm a responsible person, and, and I think, um, you know, when you're responsible for, uh, a community. You have to really be responsible, um, because you're accountable to state officials, you're accountable for monies, um. And, you know, I think another great trait that I have is, is I'm a, a visionary, that, um. You know, one of my favorite things to do is my wife and I will drive around some weekends, we'll go to a, a different community and, and try to find a bakery or something like that, and, and. We walk around those small communities and, and we see all these great things that they have, and if I can do that, I can do that, I can take that back to Millersburg and do that. And I, and I ask her all the time, do you think these people really appreciate that they have a, a, a waterway going through their community, that they have this in their community, they really appreciate that? Because, you know, Millersburg is flat and surrounded by cornfield, and so we don't have a lot there, um. Sometimes it's hard for me because I have big ideas and big goals, um, and it's hard for me to be patient and ride it out and, and see it happen, to see it happen, but, uh. You know, I'm respectful, I'm friendly, I'm personable, and, and I, I have a vision for, for the communities I serve in.
What is the most useful criticism you've ever received, and what did you learn from it?
I think the most useful criticism I've received is I need to put on my biggie boy pants, because I would get so upset, um. You know, i- in a small community, um, people don't really come out to town council meetings, um, unless there's a rate increase or something like that, they don't come out to council meetings. And, and so when they do, you know, you start sweating, and you think, oh, boy, what's, what, what are they gonna complain about? Um, and I take things so personal, and I, I get so upset, and, um, I mean, I wouldn't get mad in, in a council meeting, but I'd go home and I'd just mope and, and be upset, um, and, uh. And, and when they don't come to council meetings, they take to social media, and, you know, they're, they're social media warriors, and they tear you up on social media, and I just. I would, I would, it would just bum me out, um, I was, I was talking to, uh. Our town marshal one day, I was in his office, and we were talking about stuff, and he said, you know, you need to put on your biggie boy pants, because people are always gonna complain, no matter where you're at, they're always gonna complain. He said, if they really have a problem, if they really want to see something done, they're gonna come to a meeting, and they're gonna talk to you about it, and they, don't, don't sweat the people on social media. And, and I've kind of. You know, taken that to heart and, and tried to apply it in my life, and. I'm not as stressed as I used to get.
Good for you.
That's good.
What tools or techniques do you use to ensure the city commission is always kept apprised of major issues that arise within the city?
Um, I think it's important to have, um, at least bi-weekly meetings with, with the staff or department heads, um, to find out what's going on, what the plans are for that week, uh, for that month. And, uh. You know, in Millersburg, we, we have a town council meeting every, uh, second and fourth Wednesday, um, which I have to go and report to the town council, and, um. Just open door, if, if a town council member has a, has a problem or a question, they always text me, they give me a call, they shoot me an email, um. If I have something that's really pressing, I think this can't wait, I need to talk to them, I have a very good council that I know I can text them or send them an email, hey, can you guys meet? At least one of you meet, um, real quick and talk about this, um. Again, open door policy, just keep everybody informed, meet with your staff, and, and find out what everybody's doing, so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Our city manager will need to be a regional voice and foster excellent relationships with our neighboring communities, please share with us how you will build lasting positive relationships with adjacent community leaders.
You just gotta get involved, um. In Millersburg, Millersburg is, it's a, it's the smallest community in Elkhart County. And they were left out of everything, they were the redheaded stepchild in Elkhart County, um, and, and then, but you just get involved, you know, you reach out to your county commissioners, um, you attend. You attend a commission meeting or something like that, um, and then, you know, they have other networking meetings, the big push now in Elkhart County is their trail system. And. So, uh, there's a, a community develop, or, Elkhart County Community Foundation, they hold different training things, so, you know, I started attending those. And then you start networking from there, well then, you know, now all of a sudden, Millersburg has a council member, um. On the, the board of, um. Economic Development Corporation of Elkhart County, um, now Millersburg is included in the trails and bikeways discussion, um, you know, now Millersburg gets invited to these city planning meetings where all the city heads get together and. Discuss things we got coming down the pipe of the next year, six months a year, two years, and three years, um, just get involved, you, you take advantage of every opportunity you can to network. Smile, and. Just get involved, and that's what I've done, and I, I've made some great friends, um, I've, I've made some great teammates, team, uh, teammates, and, and making things happen in Elkhart County.
Great, thank you. You had mentioned back in number, uh, six about the budget and financials, uh, and you had touched on a little bit, can you expand on that a little bit further in relation to the budget, and you had mentioned about. Utilizing. Utilities to, to help cover the cost of our budget for general man, general funds, so is that something you can expand on?
Well, so, first of all, when it comes to the budget, when I went to Millersburg, I was. I was, I, I feel like I was in your shoes, our, our utilities were finishing in the red, they were falling apart, they, um, we had, we had to do some, uh, reconstruction projects at the wastewater and, and the water. The general fund wasn't very healthy, um. And, and we're paying on very old bonds still for our water and wastewater, um, so when I took over, um. The, uh. You know, we, we paid off our bonds early, I, one was like ten years early, and one was five years early, kinda paid off, um, a- and we did that through, you know. We had to meet with, the town used one engineering firm for everything, um, and, and just to give an example. firm for everything, and just to give an example, and we had an I and I problem in our wastewater plant. And so I met with these engineers and we talked, and they said, yeah, we can, we'll do this study for you, it's going to cost you $23,000, let us know when you want to start. And so I reached out to another community and asked their advice on stuff, and they said, well, we use these engineers. So I reached out to those engineers, they came and looked at everything, they said, yeah, we can help you, it's going to cost you $30,000, but there is a state planning grant that we will help you get, and it's going to be a 10% match. So we went from our old engineers, said it's twenty-some thousand dollars, let us know when to start, to interviewing a new engineering firm who said, it's 30,000, it's going to cost you three out of pocket, and let us help you get this grant. And I've stayed with them ever since. So I've been in your shoes, it's, you got to, you got to look at your budget, you got to look at who you do business with, and make sure that you're operating efficiently and effectively, and that you're being accountable to the community for the tax dollars that they're paying you. Now, when it comes to the utilities in your budget, I wasn't necessarily saying that you can use the utilities to prop up your general fund, but just looking at the budget that I had, your general fund was grossly in the red, I mean, it was bad. I want to say it was like $500,000 or something like that. But your utility budget was finishing really well, and so your utility budget brought your general fund budget, the overall city budget, back into the black. We use, we use the utility budget in Millersburg, as far as general fund goes, we don't use the utility budget for police, we don't use the utility budget for fire. But the utility budget, though, there is a portion of that that goes to the town council for their compensation, our clerk treasurer and her assistant because they do my water billing and paperwork and stuff like that. And a small portion of the utility budget goes to our maintenance department because they do the excavation work and stuff like that when we have to repair water lines. But our utility budget doesn't in any way prop up or support our general fund.
Okay, perfect, great explanation, I appreciate it, thank you.
Many of the projects that we hope to achieve over the next five years involve grant writing and economic development. Please detail your current and/or previous experience in grant writing and successful economic development projects.
Writing the grant myself, I've only done a couple, and that was through the Community Foundation of Elkhart County. But I have received grants for the town of Millersburg from the state of Indiana, I've received three grants, two for wastewater projects, one for water projects. We received grants from the Community Foundation, we've received two or three grants from We've also received grants from Homeland Security for security issues out at our utility plants. So I've worked with grant administrators, getting them the paperwork they need, I've done a couple of small grants myself, but I'm kind of familiar with how the process works. Economic development projects that we've done in Millersburg. Millersburg is a, it's an RV community. Forest River, who makes RVs, they have, I think they have eight or nine buildings in Millersburg, and we have maybe fifteen industrial buildings in Millersburg. We're still working, our economic development, we've done more community development as far as investing in ourselves first to get other people to invest in Millersburg. So most of the work that I've done has been community development. It's been signs, sidewalks, streets, parks, art alleys, new town hall building, economic development, we're still working on getting there. We have three areas of town that we have established as areas that we want to develop. One is more in an industrial area, one is more residential, one is more commercial. We're working on developing those areas, we're working on purchasing land. It's been slow, small community without a lot of money, so we're trying to be creative with our funds and to achieve those goals. We've done a lot with community development, we're inching along with economic development. And we don't have the older buildings that you guys have here, and you know, that's another thing, do communities really appreciate the old buildings they have that can be redone and remodeled and reused, so.
All right, we're going to fast forward to May 2024. It's time for the City Commission to evaluate your first year as our city manager. Please share with us what you hope to have accomplished in your first 12 months with the city.
Well, I'd hope to have a balanced budget, I hope to have a very good working relationship with all the team members here at Buchanan, on the staff. I'd hope to meet all the benchmarks that you, the commission, have set for me. And I hope that the city would have a very good working relationship with local businesses. You know, it's kind of hard to answer that question because I don't know what benchmarks you guys have for me to meet. But you know, 12 months from now, I want to have met all those benchmarks and put the time in and see that you guys notice that I put the time in to accomplish what you expect of me.
Thank you, sir.
When you consider all the components of municipal management, what one area do you believe you truly excel in?
I would say creativity. You really have to be creative in accomplishing some of the goals that you want to get done. I would say even maybe vision for the direction you want your community to go. You know, I think Buchanan has some big goals and big ideas in developing along the Sajel River there. And from talking to people in the community, it seems that Buchanan was kind of a, was kind of dead in the water at one time, and you've kind of righted the course and got the ship moving again. And I think what separates a good community from a great community is a great community has the ability to reinvent themselves every now and then. When they see things are going stagnant, they can step back, look at things, reinvent themselves, and get going again. And I think that's what you guys are doing here at Buchanan. And I think that is so important in running a community and working with a community, is the vision to see, okay, this is not working, let's step back, take a closer look at things, and then right the course. I think, I think good vision, along with the work ethic to see your goals, follow through on your goals and commitments.
Thank you.
What are the most critical things you will do as a first-time city manager to enhance your ability to be successful?
Actually, what was your question?
I'm sorry. What are the most critical things you will do as a first-time city manager to enhance your ability to be successful?
So I thought about that, there's three things I think, the top three things that I think are utmost important. One, which I said already, is focus on customer relations, making sure that the residents in the city know when we meet, know what we're meeting about, know what projects we have, know how we're going to do that, know how we're spending their tax money, make sure they're good stewards of their tax money. Next, you know, I think you need to meet, you need to meet your team, who all is working with the city at Buchanan, and find out what their goals are, what they want to accomplish, and work with them in developing a plan to meet those goals and see what they need to accomplish. Lastly then is, lastly then is, you know, take inventory of what you have, make sure that if you have vehicles that need replaced, police cars, fire trucks, utility vehicles, make sure that everything is in good working order. And yeah, take inventory of what the city has and what it owns and what can be done with it, make sure it's being used or utilized in a manner that's going to best benefit the city. So customer relationships, team member relationships, and making sure the city is utilizing what they have properly.
Thank you. In relation to our upcoming water and sewer infrastructure projects downtown, right, some major things are coming, in your experience and your current role, how do you think that that would help us through those infrastructure and water sewer concerns, obviously for citizens and for ourselves as a council?
You know, there's, are any of you an engineer? Okay. So, you know, there's this, there's this, you know, it's kind of a joke, at least, at least where I'm at, that, you know, your engineers will design your plant, they'll design your infrastructure, and they'll put it in place, and then it's up to the operator to go back and change it and make it work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And you know, I've had that happen twice, so that's not bad, and there were minor changes. But I think my experience is, you know, I know how it goes, I know how it works, and you know, if something doesn't seem right, doesn't look right, you don't panic, you just, okay, that is what it is, and it needs to be this, so what are we going to do to get it fixed? The other thing is, you know, you need to, you need to rely on your operators, the people in charge at the water plant, people in charge at the sewer plant, because they know, they know the plant, they know their system. And you need to consult with them and get their opinions and get their advice, and just got to be patient, you got to stay on your engineers, and don't be afraid to, you know what, I don't think that's going to work. Well, it's going to work because, well, I don't think it's going to work under this. And don't be afraid to voice your opinions, they work for you, and you know, you know your plant and your facilities better than they do, so patience, understanding of how things work, and just relying on the people that you have in charge. I mean, they're, you've hired them for a reason, and rely on them, so.
Great, thanks Ben.
All right, Ben, we're about ready to wrap things up here, so could you take the next two or three minutes and tell us why you are the right fit and the ideal candidate to lead Buchanan?
I'm the right fit because I've been where you guys are financially, I've been where you guys are with your infrastructure, your utilities. And I know how hard it can be and how daunting the task can seem, but I know that there's light at the end of the tunnel, you just keep pushing your way through it. I'm the right fit for Buchanan because of my longevity, you know, I'm committed to my job. I love Millersburg, if and when I do leave Millersburg, I'm going to leave with a heavy heart. But I'm not getting the personal and professional growth there anymore that I used to. And so I have a desire to continue to learn, I have a desire to bring the knowledge that I've learned in managing Millersburg, and bring it and help another community add to what they have and help another community progress. You know, I have knowledge in grants and utilities and street department, and I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty, I'm not afraid to, if something's going wrong, to be the one to jump in the trench and get soaked and get whatever is fixed, fixed. I spoke to my wife, you know, my wife and I have talked a lot about this, and I said, you know, it's, and I spoke to Mr. Lynch last week also, and I, he said, you know, give me any advice, he said, be prepared to work. So it's going to be a lot of hours, and I talked to my wife about that. In fact, she brought it up before I did, she said, you know, it's going to be a lot of hours, probably at first. And I said, yeah, I know that. So I'm not afraid to put the time in, I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty, and I have a lot of knowledge, and I'm excited to bring what I've learned and what I know and add to what you guys are doing and what you know.
Thank you. Well, we've sat up here and asked you a bunch of questions, do you have any for us?
Do you have any reservations concerning me?
Tough question.
It's not that tough, really, I don't think personally. You live out of town, Millersburg, you've got 23 years of loyalty. I mean, we can't go into the relocation thing, but Millersburg's a pretty strong commute.
Sure. So I work in Millersburg, I live in Goshen, which Goshen's about 15 to 20 minutes northwest of Millersburg. You know, the definition of a long commute, I think, is different to everybody. I know I'm the right person at Buchanan, I want to serve at Buchanan, I want to continue to grow professionally and personally in Buchanan, and it's not a long commute to me.
Do you have any other questions?
If I'm offered this position, what would you expect of me in the first 12 months?
Take it out.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I think you hit a lot of it. Getting our budget and our asset management plan probably would be the top priorities.
And I think in tandem with that, that supports that, is exactly what your vision is in relation to communication with your team, interaction with the team, you know, being very forthright with them and putting their, what your expectations are, and just really building that team atmosphere, and then putting, as you stated, the leadership in each division or each department in charge and reporting that information to you so that we collectively work as a team, I think, that in addition to the budget seems to correct things pretty quickly, so.
I'm more of a, see, I don't really have a check mark box for you to check, what I'm really looking for is to have this, this sense of calm that Mr. Lynch has brought to our community. You've said a few things that kind of struck me, and I like what I'm hearing. I don't even know where I'm going with my answer either. But I, mine isn't so much project-based as, you know, what we'd like to see you done, I'd like to see you get the community behind us, and I like the idea that you call yourself a visionary that can steer people to see the light at the end of the tunnel. That's something that we have, I think we have a problem doing sometimes, because of the lack of participation that you've already spoke about and you know about. I mean, we have that here too, nobody comes arguing either unless they're passionate about something that's happening. So you know, my biggest goal is to get somebody sitting in that seat that gets the entire community on the same track. I know that sounds weird and probably really broad, but that's what I'm looking for, somebody who can do that, who can steer the entire community towards common goals.
Well, we've kind of developed a calm within this, you know, within this building now, and our staff, the staff, you know, is working really great, and we haven't seen that for a while, and I just think that, you know, like Mayor Dennison said, you know, that visionary wanting to reach out to the community, drawing the community in, and asking for their ideas, and I know I've seen some good smiles and head shakes when we talked about the budget and those kind of things, so yeah, you know, that's what we're looking for here, I do believe, you know, and... And fortunately enough, in the couple of months that Mr. Lynch has been here, he's kind of brought that here. And so, you know, that's basically what we're looking for here, so.
It's us utility guys, you know.
Well, there you go, yeah. Another one of those wastewater agents.
An operator.
Yeah, an operator, there you go.
Operator, operator. The helter-skelter. I mean, the continuation of getting away from the helter-skelter. Because there's so many projects that we've got going on, that we're really not following through with any of them, and we haven't for so long, that we really need to focus, really pinpoint focus, and start, like he says, ticking this stuff off and putting it behind us. Because we've got so many things, and the budget, I mean, I'll love you forever. The budget, the budget, the budget. You know, the money, whatever way you can bring up the money. Because we're looking at, you know, I mean, I don't know how much we can go into it, but...
You know, I want to make it clear, when it comes to your budget, you know, if you offer me the position, I'm not going to fix it like that. But it's a team effort. It does, it takes time, and it's a team effort, and it's... Sometimes it's painful, but it's rewarding when you get it under control. You know, one thing I noticed in the minutes, and this is kind of off-topic, but kind of similar to what you all said, is, you know, working together as a team, and you've got a good team here, and they get along well. My wife, she's been with the City of Goshen for 23 years. She's billing the water and sewer office, they're billing supervisor. And so we compare things. I have a very good council that... They'll send me a text out, hey, you're doing a great job, we appreciate your work, dah 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 dah. Or the same thing at a council meeting. Or, you know, we get a heavy snow, you know. They're the first, you know, in the council meeting, call out the street department, hey, you guys did a great job of getting our roads plowed so quickly. She doesn't get that in Goshen, you know. They don't get a whole lot of, their departments don't get a whole lot of praise. But one thing I noticed about you guys in reading through your minutes, there were times when, you know, at the end of the council meeting, everybody takes a second, hey, you know, thanks for our clerk and our office staff, and you guys do a great job, we appreciate you, dah 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 dah. That goes a long way with your staff. Because, you know, I see my wife, they don't get that, and I do, and it makes you, you know, want to keep going and push a little bit harder. I think that's great in Buchanan, that, you know, I read the minutes, that you guys do take the time to call out this person, thank him for their hard work, and so on and so forth, so. I think you guys are moving in the right direction there as far as keeping people's heads up.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't, I think I'm good.
I don't have any, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Now you can go outside and listen to your time.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Have you ever heard any jokes about engineers? Mechanic with the intelligence educated out of them.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
It's mechanic with the intelligence educated out of them. It's an old roughneck.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
See you tomorrow.
Give me a call Sunday.
So I think we're going to have a short discussion on our candidates, but I think before we do that, Tim, if you're okay with it, I'd like to get just your opinion of the three candidates before we start telling you ours.
I think they're three very qualified candidates. I'm not going to say you couldn't go wrong by picking any of them, because you never know what you're going to pick, but I'm confident that any of the three could do the job.
Thanks. Spoken like a real politician.
Yeah, I was just saying.
When are you done?
You've got your political degree.
Yeah, really. You're willing to stick around.
Yeah, really. Way to put your neck on the line there, Tim.
No, they all have unique skills. They go a long ways here.
Let's ask you a different question. Let's ask you a different question. Just knowing as a city manager and what you're up against, who would you think would be able to come in here and fit going forward aggressively best?
I can't answer that, listening to a 45-minute interview.
Right, yeah, you need to go...
We'll quit drilling you.
But we're not going to know it for 90 days.
Yeah.
But I mean, just, if you had to, you're not going to.
I will. I would hire Ben Eldridge and Arby. Every story that he told was somehow a success. He did, he turned a lot of things around in Millersburg. I like the fact that when she sneezed, he said bless you in the middle of an answer. I like, I mean, that says something to me. It might seem mundane and ridiculous, but he's kind and he thinks of others. He said something else. I mean, just his answers about the difference between a good city and a great city, the ability to reinvent yourselves, being creative and being visionary.
As I say, I like that visionary, I like...
He had me at the sneeze. I mean, I... It sounds simple, it sounds silly, but...
So, I mean, I don't disagree. So, when we were talking before that interview, I had reservations about making a decision.
Me too.
But listening to that interview, some of my notes were, and not to dwell on the other candidates, I wrote areas of concern. On Ben's, I just couldn't stop writing things I liked hearing.
Yep.
I had, I wrote down a sense of trust. I felt like I trusted that guy after the fourth question that he answered.
Yep.
I'm like, all right, he's drawing me in. He clearly was very well-prepared with answers that had meaning and were well-thought-out and had background behind them. I wrote exceptional answer at number 12. He said, he made sure that he got Millersburg in places where they held positions that were part of the discussion. Like he put himself in a position...
He made them relevant.
Yeah, made them relevant. I wrote down calm. I think he can come in and have immediate respect with the staff. Self-starter.
Because he's not afraid to do the work himself, right?
Knows how to see through the trees. He said he loved his community multiple times. I mean, and I think he's a realist, I mean, he gets the budget. He understood the budget better than anybody else that came in here today.
No, and that's the other thing is, he did his homework because he has known things that I'd said. He'd known things that I wrote. He used the word pivot, which I really liked, which having, you know, he said you have to be, you have to, sorry, you have to be adaptable and you have to rely on others. When he was talking about pivoting, which I liked. I just, I think he's got the experience that we need, but I think that he, honestly, his personality reminds me of Tim. He's very calm. I don't see him getting riled up. I don't see things, you know, I just don't see him getting riled up. I mean, I could go on and on and on. I mean, my vote would be for the last gentleman.
Well, that, and I have to totally agree, but I just like some of the words that he used, you know, the visionary concept, putting on your big-boy pants, you know. Meeting with the staff, you know, if that's the case, you know, bi-weekly meetings. You know, involving the staff in stuff that you do, talking about community support.
But that's, I was just going to say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but at number eight, when we asked, please describe your proudest moments, he brought the community together, was his words.
Yep.
If you can do that, well, then you do.
And he kept challenging himself along, he kept...
Well, you know, he was noticeably nervous, but I mean, you know...
Because he said, he stated that, he said, I got clammy hands and, you know, a few sweat.
I mean, we could go on and on about the other candidates too, but I don't think we need to. And I don't, I mean, I think it might come across as just bashing the other ones versus...
And I really like Brian too. You know, we kind of had some reservations at first, and I think it was Frank that told us in that meeting, you know, says, you got to listen to this guy, and he is going.
No, I think Brian will be successful no matter what he does or where he goes.
I think he, I think that...
I think that he's a winner.
Yeah.
I worry about his experience.
His demeanor, you know, excuse me, but his demeanor was perfect. I mean, being as excitable as I am, I do really love that.
Is that the last one, or Brian, or the middle one?
The middle one.
Okay, Brian, yeah.
Brian, Brian, and then Ben, right? Brian and Ben, and then it was Robert or Bob.
Yep.
But Ben was very reserved, very quiet, but he's got that 30 years of competence in the field. And then Ben, he's got that same competence, only thing is it's in a different field. But we need water and sewer. I mean, you can weigh, you can weigh the positives, but we need that water and sewer knowledge, even though it's a different state. He passed that license in one time, I don't know, did you take it once and pass it?
Yes.
But it's not, it's not very often that it happens, is it? Because I mean, I took a real estate test.
It's no slam dunk.
No, it's not.
None of them are.
I mean, it's something to brag about, you know, it really is. I just, I'm trying to reconfirm what you guys are saying.
I think his experience, his demeanor...
The only reservation I have, Sean, is 23 years at the same job, you know. You know, that could be very good or it could be very bad.
Well, but the thing is, he's, he is more, he, as Patrick mentioned, he loves his community, but he's willing to leave because he doesn't feel like he's challenged.
He's not challenged, he wants to grow. He's still willing to grow.
I like that.
And, yeah, that's a plus.
He's exploring other communities for fun.
If I had one red flag, it would be his commute, but I don't, you know, whatever.
Well, you know, and that's, that may change.
It might make him late a couple of days in the winter. I mean, I don't, I don't, as I say that out loud, it's...
Millers, yeah.
It's a good 45 minutes.
Yeah, 45 minutes away, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's all of that. But I would imagine that...
It's a haul. I mean, it takes me 40...
Tim, what's your drive of work right now?
30, 30 minutes.
I enjoy it, actually. He can get on the bypass.
It's time to chill out.
He kind of alluded to that, I'm sorry, but he alluded to the same thing, you know. That drive, you know, you know, could calm him down, getting ready for the day, you know. He's got to come in here and put his big-boy pants on, you know. Yeah, if I had to, if I had to grab a hold of somebody right now, I think, you know, him or Tim. I mean, that's...
I mean, I'm with you, I don't think we need a special meeting.
And when Mark left, he said to me, he said, that's our guy, so.
So do you want to make a vote?
Sure.
Well, Frank, what is procedure are you in?
As I say, we have a procedure we need to look at.
I mean, somebody could make a motion that we prefer a certain candidate, and we could...
Yeah, so the motion, if you're extending an offer, is, it's a condition, if you make a motion to offer a contingent offer of employment, conditional offer of employment to Benjamin Eldridge as Buchanan City Manager, it's a conditional offer, contingent on successful background check and negotiations. So it's a conditional offer, and here's what it's contingent on, those two things. And I have to say, I thought Brian, I'd hire Brian in a second too. I really thought he was good. Ben's really good. We identified Ben early on as a very strong candidate, we did a lot of research on him. But when you take a look at the three things that we were looking for, number one was leadership in this team, this team needs leadership back, and we need teamwork among, someone's going to bring in and build a team, and then a very effective customer service. Those were the three things we identified in this recruitment, and those last, I, nope. Yeah, that's a tough choice. They're really good. And I would say Frank brought three excellent candidates to take...
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I totally agree. I mean, you know...
I mean, and it turns out you didn't even need my opinion. You weren't going to give it anyhow, so we wanted to hear it out.
Yeah, you had that good political response.
They were well, well, I do a lot of this, a lot of communities, we have seven clients right now, and I'll tell you what, those three were some of the most prepared, and they knew about as much of the budgets, maybe somewhere in the room. They knew the master plan, I mean, they were so well researched. I just sat back and just smiled at all the stuff that they knew, that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's a feather in your cap also, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, so that would be, if you do decide to make a motion, then we, then you've got to start figuring out who's going to work with a candidate on the contract and get it done, and what's the target date? Your next meeting is Monday, and then it's two weeks from Monday?
The 22nd.
So hopefully the target would be two weeks from Monday. The 22nd would be a target date to have the contract in front of the City Commission for approval, and set up a starting date and all of that.
Okay, let's start with the motion.
I wrote it down.
Patrick, Patrick wrote it down, so, yeah.
So I'll make the motion to offer conditional employment to Benjamin Eldridge, contingent upon the background check and negotiations.
I'll support it.
Read it.
I know, he wanted to support it.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Slum?
Yes.
Tennis?
Yes.
Kids?
Now that we've done that, there's no secrets that we need to know about, are there?
That's what we'll figure out.
No, we did, yeah, actually, I actually talked to a pharmacist down in, that works at one of the Walgreens, just checking, because it was really important to see how Brian worked with us, and for Ben, we talked to four or five people down in the area, people that he knows, and he had very strong references. I think what you see is what you get with Ben. If I had to say one word to summarize Ben, it would be gentlemen.
Very much so.
That's one word that summarizes him and everything about him, so, yeah. So, we'll notify all the candidates tonight of your decision and start working internally with the contract. We'll take our time in getting it done and all of that. And the background check is completed by a third-party administrator. I have nothing to do with it. Actually, they just build a city directly, and it's included in the proposal that I gave you. And his name is Ken Olet, and he's a retired Internal Affairs Director for the city. He's licensed in Police Department, and he does nothing but background checks and all that. Criminal, civil, credit, driving, and the Michigan State Police Sexual Registry List. All of those things will be, and so take a little bit more time since he's out of state. Yeah, a little bit more time, because he checks all the, he finds out where the candidates live and checks all of those things. That report will come back to you probably in a week, so, at the same time, we'll be working on the contract.
Great.
So you'll contact him tomorrow then, is that how that works?
For tonight.
I'll contact all three of them tonight, let them know your decision, and I'll also get the background checked. Since he's out of state, I want to get that going by the way. And he needs to provide a bunch of personal information to the investigator. So once I connect them, I stay out of it, and I do not get copied on any of the corresponding Twitter.
All right, thank you, Frank.
Yep, you got it.
Okay, this time it'll open up for public comment.
We need to pick who's going to negotiate, right? Didn't you say that?
Yeah, exactly. Who is going to either, so it'd be nice to have one person or a couple of people from the commission and Tim involved, and then typically your, what you usually do is take the existing contract you had. I know this needs to be, I understand there's some changes about that contract that need to be made, but you start from the existing contract. There's probably 80% of that's boilerplate, it's not going to be changed, but salary severance and all those things that you go through, those are all the things that be negotiated. But you start from your existing contract, we work with council, we take our time and get it right, we don't rush it.
Sure.
I think it should be you and I.
Yeah, anybody opposed to Patrick, myself, and Tim?
But that's who I was going to suggest. We don't need to make any kind of...
Yeah, I don't think we need to make a motion.
We don't need any kind of a motion, we just need to clarify.
Cool. Okay, so at this time I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone who should make a public comment? Norma, it's your turn.
It's my turn. I was impressed by this last fellow with sewer, water. Yes, we need help with that. I don't believe our... I don't believe our employees have been given any kind of chance to talk about anything, except the materials they need. And him wanting to have communication with the community.
Yeah, no, it's vital, yep.
So that would be us.
Thank you, anyone else?
Have more people come to meetings.
Come to the meetings, is there a chance? Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
You know, and I, there was one other thing that I liked, because he talked specifically about, you know, he came to town to talk to Michael Rowland, and then he commented on, you know, it's really nice that this commission, you know, recognizes people in the audience and does things and says, you know. So, that's another person who does his homework, in my opinion, so, I'm sorry.
He was well-prepared, for sure.
I'll move to adjourn.
And I'll support.
All in favor, say aye.
Let me know, I can't come to a meeting.
Frank, thanks a lot, man, we appreciate everything you did, great job.
Keep in touch, we got some work to do.